Call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, welcome everyone to the July 8th Planning and Zoning Regular Commission Meeting. Let's start with the roll call, please.
Wilhelm?
Here.
Schreiber?
Here.
Carrie?
Here.
Schlahtower?
Here.
Stephenson?
Here.
Any ceremonies, announcements, appointments, or presentations tonight, Mr. Manley?
Yeah, I do want to have an announcement regarding the Post Falls Festival. City staff will be at the Post Falls Festival on Friday, July 11th, from 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And Saturday from, which is July 12th, from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. With information on two major planning efforts. This is the transportation master plan and the comprehensive plan update. We invite community members to stop by our booth to learn more about these important projects, ask questions, and share your input. Your feedback plays a vital role in helping shape the future of transportation growth and development in Post Falls. This is a great chance to get involved, stay informed, and help guide the vision of our community. And we hope to see you there.
Thank you. Do we have any amendments to the agenda?
There's none.
All right, any declaration of conflict, ex parte contacts, or site visits from commission members?
No.
Seeing none, we had the consent calendar, please.
Yeah, we got action item A, which is the meeting minutes from the June 10th, 2025 P&amp;Z meeting. We got action item B, which is the zoning recommendation for the Lingar annexation, file number ANNX 2411. Action item C is the zoning recommendation for Painted Rock Annexation, ANNX 253. And then we have action item D, which is the reasoned decision for Harvest Meadows PUD, file number PUD 25-1.
Any questions? If I want to make a motion?
I move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
I have a motion, second?
A second.
And a second, roll call, please.
Wilhelm?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Schlahtower?
Yes.
Stephenson?
Yes. Next item is citizen issues. This section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the commission on an issue that is not on the agenda tonight. Persons wishing to speak will have five minutes. Do we have any, anybody wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda tonight? Seeing none, moving on. Any unfinished or old business?
There's none.
All right, let it move us into our public hearings tonight, we have four of them. If you want to speak during the public hearings, please get the form in the back, fill that out. And during the public hearings, we'll invite people up here, you'll have four minutes to speak during that time. Make sure you turn the form in up front. We'll start with the first, first item here, special use permit, Soaring Learners File, SUP-25-4. We'll open that hearing.
Good evening, Commissioners, John Manley, Planning Manager here, presenting the Soaring Learners Special Use Permit, file number SUP 254. So the applicant is Scott MacArthur, representing the owner, Robin Bench. They're requesting approval for a private micro school and tutoring center offering small group academic instructions and enrichment programs for students within the industrial zoning district. Project request is as you see here in the hatch, northwest corner of Bay and Third Street, right there. Land use that was most recently that you guys may be familiar with was a daycare, it's been a daycare there for a number of years. It's over the Ratsford Periographer, and the city Post Falls provides both water and sewer to the site. Looking at some of the surrounding zoning you see here, directly adjacent to the west and south, the other gray areas, that's other industrial zones, to east, north, and west a little bit, that orange, that's R3 multifamily zoning. To the southeast, in the like off brown yellow color there, that's a medium density R2 zone. And then you have R1, a little bit to the west there. Looking at the future land use designation, this is in the business commercial, that's that pink. And just to the east, you got high-density land use designation. And that red's commercial, and then to the lighter yellow is the lower-density residential land use designation. So looking at the review criteria for this proposal, first we're looking is, does this special use, will it conform to the purposes of the applicable zoning district? And you see here that in the staff report, I did cite that the educational use would conform as the industrial zoning district encourages and promotes less detrimental effects for surrounding properties by reduction or elimination of nuisances such as smoke, noise, vibration, dust, glare, air pollution, water pollution, and less demand of public services and electricity, gas, sewer, and streets. So the proposed educational at the size of the structure at this location would be consistent to what this is stated in code. Second criteria deals with, does the proposed use constitute an allowable special use permit? This is an excerpt from our land use table. You see here that there's no direct micro school tutorial center that we can identify in our land. But the most applicable is if you look at thematically between the elementary to high school, all those educational ones do require a special use permit. And that's why we're here today, is to be consistent and look at the special use permit for what they're proposing. Whether the proposed use will or will not be compatible with the health, safety, welfare of the public or with the land uses within the vicinity of the proposal, there's nothing identified that it wouldn't be compatible. When you look at this project location map here and the surrounding uses, to the, directly to the east, you've got some multifamily. Along Third Avenue, you have additional single-family homes to the east. To the west, you have some other commercial industrial types buildings. To the south, you do have an industrial building. To the north, you have some storage uses. So all of that would be compatible and be seen consistent with their proposal. Going into the review criteria four, whether the proposed use will or will not comply with the goals and policies found in the comprehensive plan. So we do cite some goals that it would be consistent with. Plan for and established types of quantities of land uses in Post Falls supporting community needs and cities' long-term sustainability. You can see here the staff did cite that, you know, the prosperity and the diversity of schools may play a role in this endeavor. The other would be policy eight, encourage compatible infill development and redevelopment of vacant and underutilized properties in the city. Now, right there at that arrow, you see what staff more or less cited was the site evolving into an education center may improve access to diversified education in Post Falls, and the redevelopment of site will improve sidewalk connectivity. So along the southern end of that property, we do require them to, as far as site development with this, because it would be a change of use to add some additional sidewalk. And then along the north end, there's very limited sidewalk they also would be adding. So there would be some, some additional, minor, but some, some improvements to that site. Policy 10, prioritize the location of schools in areas with access to arterial and collector streets, ample sidewalks and pedestrian access, proximity to residential areas, and cost-effective access to necessary utilities and services. So the two main points there are the road classifications for Third and Bay, Third being a major collector and Bay being a minor collector. And also, as you saw like or heard when I introduced, you do have off to the east, those are the residential uses that are off to the east nearby. Here's the agencies that were notified. Here is the list, the seven comments we got from other jurisdictions. And they are all either neutral, they're going to comment at time of permit, or no utilities, no environmental impacts, so no real major concerns that we've heard. And then here's the four criteria, kind of all summed up, do you have any questions for me on this?
Any questions?
Just a couple. Yeah, how big is that structure that's there now, just a rough idea?
You know, the applicant may know that better than I do.
No problem. How long has the daycare been gone for?
I think that's more fairly recent. I don't know the exact date of the termination of that, once again, the applicant might be able to answer that.
If, if, if it was staying as a daycare, would they even need it as special use?
No.
Because it's just a continued use?
It's actually allowed in the zone.
So daycare is allowed in the industrial?
Part of that is because you do have industrial-type facilities that provide onsite daycare services.
Okay.
So I believe that plays a role in why it's permitted in that. And there's some synergy with industrial and nearby daycare that you can provide. Versus here, educational facilities you may or may not want near some nuisance industrial facility.
Right.
And so having a special use provides that opportunity to kind of either A mitigate it or maybe not allow it if for some reason you had a real pollutant industrial use nearby.
And then in our comp plan, when we're talking about meeting some of the goals and so forth in there, is there anything in our comp plan specific to locating schools close to parks and recreation opportunities? Because I know we've got that city park basically across the street.
At the top of my head, no, I think that if that was in the code, that would be in, I'll go to that section. That should have been listed if it was one, as one of those things to consider.
I just was wondering if it was one we overlooked or something. Because we've got the Centennial Trail basically behind it, and the city park across the street, which seems to be.
See, now you're in the comp plan update process, so hey.
That's why I was asking.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all.
All right. All right, thank you. Write the applicant up. Name for the record, please.
Robin Bench. I'm the founder of Soaring Learners, a micro school and tutoring center preparing to relocate to 1461 East Third Avenue. I'm here tonight requesting a special use permit to operate a small private school in the location which was previously used as a daycare facility. The property is zoned industrial, and while this use is not permitted outright, we believe that the nature of our program and the low-impact operation makes it a good fit for a special use permit within this zone. Soaring Learners is a small, community-based school designed to support students with a range of learning styles through hands-on, project-based education. We plan to send up to 25 students with school hours from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And those are just our hours of operation. And we are planning on doing staggered drop-off and pickup times to minimize traffic impacts. We've reviewed and are prepared to meet all the conditions recommended by city staff, and we're actively working with professionals to ensure full compliance with zoning, safety, parking, site development requirements. This project is deeply, deeply meaningful to me, and I truly believe it will be a positive, community-centered use of this space. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Scott, our engineer, who can walk you through our conceptional exhibit and provide more detail on how we plan to align with city guidelines and expectations. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Scott MacArthur, MacArthur Engineering. Here tonight on behalf of the Bench family to talk about their dream. This site, as Mr. Manley and Ms. Bench pointed out, was a former daycare facility. And actually, the needs, the interior needs that she's currently rehabbing, getting a jump start on this, meet the requirements for this micro school. With some site improvements, it's kind of hard to see on, on this layout with all the parking requirements, the onsite stormwater requirements, and bike racks, trash enclosures. Everything can be met as required by city staff to open this facility. And as Mr. Manley stated, we're in conformance with the goals and policies of the city of Post Falls comprehensive plan requirements. And I believe we meet all the criteria for the special use permit to be granted. I'll stand for questions.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
What is nature-based math?
I can answer your question.
Get on up here.
Why would you ask me that?
I wanted to not catch him off.
Well, no, nature-based math is math using, doing math completely outside. So you use rocks, sticks, pine cones, any sort of nature, and then you're breaking down the concepts with actual nature-based stuff. And then we're applying it to real life.
Is this like a special education type thing for people that might have a harder time in regular school?
It can be, but it's just more, it's a getting, we're getting away from traditional education, a lot of people are. And so it's just a smaller form, that's what micro school is, it's a smaller school. So eight to 10 kids at a time, less hours a day, less hours a week. Any other questions?
Yeah, as far as capacity of the school and hours of operation, does it vary? Is it different than what the daycare had?
Yeah, I'm assuming that the daycare ran from like 6:30 or 7:00 in the morning to 5:30 at night. Like I said, the longest I'll ever have students there is three hours at a time, three or four hours.
And do you think your capacity of number of students is probably less than?
Absolutely, yeah, she was licensed for 65 kids. And I don't plan to have ever over 25 there at a time.
Gotcha, thank you.
So as part of this application, there's no, at least at this point, there's no intent of expanding the existing structures or anything like that?
Any other questions?
Yeah, I'm just kind of confused, I'm sorry, about the school, is it a certified school? Or, I mean, I just don't, I'm not understanding the concept here.
Yeah, so how micro schools work right now, I'm not a charter school, I'm considered a private school. So I'm in the private sector, so parents will pay to come to me. I'm hoping in the future I can like get some way to scholarship then, but it's private school, people pay to come. So in the state of Idaho, when you homeschool your child, you don't have to turn anything in.
Yeah, okay.
That's pretty much what it is, it's like schooling for homeschoolers.
Okay.
So I'm doing the schooling for them.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
All right, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Any public testimony? No public testimony, therefore, no need for rebuttal? Okay. Close out the hearing and look at our review criteria.
Thank you, Commissioners. What you have before you tonight is the Soaring Learners Special Use Project 25-4. And going through our review criteria, there are four elements for this as a special use in the industrial zone. So number one, whether the implementation of this special use would or would not conform to the purposes of the applicable zoning district, being the industrial zone here.
Yeah, I think it does, I mean, not to mention the fact that there was daycare there for as long as I can remember. In the, the policy here does say education use would conform to this purpose within this, in the industrial zone. So a special use permit allows that then.
Agreed. Okay. Number two, whether the proposed use constitutes an allowable special use as established by this chapter for the zoning district involved and complies with all other applicable laws, ordinances, or regulations of the city and the state.
It's allowed.
This one is, is allowed as a special use, so this is sort of a self-fulfilling question on that one.
It doesn't fit exactly in the criteria, in the special uses that we have listed. However, my opinion is that it's somewhere in between, you know, our standard school category and almost daycare.
Correct.
Daycare being already an allowed use, schools being a special use, so I don't see any issue with it.
Yeah, it's akin to the existing table, because we don't have everything listed, but it's close. Number three, whether the proposed use will or will not be compatible with the health, safety, and welfare of the public or the land uses in the vicinity.
I think it's a good use for that particular corner. It's essentially a continued use, or a continued similar use of what's already there, of the existing improvements. It's kind of a nice buffer to have between the single-family and multifamily on the one side and the more, you know, intense commercial slash light industrial on the other side. And I do like the close adjacency to, you know, the Centennial Trail, City Park right there, I think that all adds up.
And it'll probably have less traffic impact than it did as the prior use.
Yeah.
Yeah, with the one with 65 people, and this drops it down to 25, so there'll be a bus traffic.
Okay, thank you. And finally, whether the proposed use will or will not comply with the goals and policies found within the comprehensive plan. So again, on this one, we're looking for a couple supporting criteria, if any.
Policy eight, while this is a small one, you're going to have some connectivity with the sidewalk being updated and completed there that hadn't been done before.
And the staff report outlines goal seven, and I think it's a pretty good fit. Long-term community needs.
I think it's a good fit too with the future land use designation for that area as well, which is that business commercial.
Thank you, Commissioners, I'd also point out, there was a condition in the staff report that was cited as well. Just making sure that the frontage improvements required by the city code be completed at the time of any CO. I'm just pointing that out to you in your deliberation, thank you.
All right, any other thoughts on this? I think it's pretty cut and dry, in my opinion, honestly. If there's no other discussion, if somebody would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move to approve the Soaring Learners Special Use Permit, SUP 25-4. Finding that it meets the approval criteria as outlined in the Post Falls Municipal Code, specifically 18.20.070. And as outlined here in our deliberation, subject to the conditions of obtaining a certificate of occupancy, all building and site improvements, frontage improvements, and any required, anything required by city code and building codes.
All right, we have a second.
Motion? I'll second that motion.
And we have a second, roll call, please.
Wilhelm?
Yes.
Stephenson?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Schlahtower?
Yes.
All right. Moving on to our next public hearing, and these are going to be done together, is that right?
Yeah, me and Commissioners, we've talked with the applicant, and since the Hope and Zoros and Early Dawn and Zoros ones are nearly identical in the deliberations and everything else, it would be our preference to present them as one and then go through the deliberations separately. Take public comment on both those proposals at the same time and then separate them out in the decision. I think that would be the best use of time and less repetitive.
So there are three?
There are three, we're going to present them.
All together, okay.
No, we're going to do two and then one.
Okay.
So just B and C will be together?
Correct, and the presentation.
And then D is separate?
Yeah, if that works for everyone.
Yeah, I think that makes sense based on what I read. We'll open up the Hope and Zoros and Early Dawn and Zoros SUP application process. Mr. Manley to present.
So all right, so the owner of both these properties are Lance Douglas, and the applicant is Austin Fuller with Whipple Consulting Engineers, representing the owner. So here you have the, the two bullets, the Hope and Zoros, they're looking for a special use permit to allow 96 multifamily units with a density bonus to be developed on 4.2 acres. And that's in your staff report and exhibited as Exhibit A 3A. And then the the other one is the special use permit to allow 192 multifamily units with a density bonus to be developed on 9.63 acres per Exhibit A 3B, which we'll be going into some of these details on these proposals. Kind of already gone over these with the previous one, it's kind of a warm-up to this. We do have, and for the people here in the audience, we'll be looking at these proposals to these four review criteria here and seeing how it matches up or doesn't to the decided criteria. So you, as a planning zoning commission, I want you guys to remember this before I, as I start going on here, is you may attach conditions with a special use permit. This is a little bit different than our other land use processes, be it a zone change or a subdivision or whatnot. You do have a little bit more power with a special use permit than you do other land use actions. And so these six here, you can either minimize adverse impact on other development, controlling the sequence and timing of development, you can control the duration of the development. You can provide conditions that assure that the development is maintained properly, and you can add conditions controlling the location and setbacks of the development. You could also require more restrictive standards than those generally required in the zoning ordinance. So here is the proposed projects, you've got the SUP 247, the 96 Unit One here at the southwest corner of East Hope and Zoros. And then you have the 192 Unit One, the SUP 252, at the northwest corner of Early Dawn and Zoros. And you can see why we're presenting them together as they provide continuity, and they actually have interconnecting road networks internally, hybrid drives actually, which you'll see tonight. Current zoning is as you see here, it's in the red is the CCS. And recently, where you see the SUP 252, that has been zoned as CCS and is red additionally. So we're looking at that special use permit in a CCS for both properties.
So that map just hasn't been updated to show that it's been annexed and zoned?
Correct.
Got it.
So here's the reference Exhibit A 3A. The conceptual plan for the 96 units, you see here's Hope and Zoros, north is actually to the left. You see they do have these 32-unit buildings that either front Hope and/or Zoros. To the south, you see here, that you see that planned access drive that they plan on connecting that other project to to provide circulation and access out to Zoros and/or Hope Avenue. In green there, which we'll go in more detail, that's the planned open space for this project. Looking at the reference Exhibit A 3B, this is the one on Early Dawn and Zoros. You can see the access drives to Zoros and Early Dawn. That reference access point is right up here on the north end. You can see the circulatory nature of the proposed parking lot to these buildings with the centralized open space at that location. So the water provider for this would be the Rossburn Water District with the city providing wastewater. Project description I've already kind of gone into. So looking at the review criteria for these projects, so the first one is, does the implementation of a special use, does it conform to the purposes of the applicable zoning district? So you look at the CCS zoning district and the intent, it does support the commercial and higher-density development such that they're along arterial and collector streets. And, but with that special use permit, the code does require that in order to do multifamily, you do need a special use permit. Looking at the applicable streets, Hope Avenue, Zoros Road, and Early Dawn, they would be consistent with that intent being along arterial and collector streets. For development, typically speaking, higher density near commercial does promote the following: a walkable customer base, a stronger sustainable business, and may provide more economic and neighborhood vitality. I list here some goals, Goals 1 and 7 as being consistent with this, as well as Policies 1, 2, 3, 8, and 20. So typically, when you have some density near a commercial core, that then provides more economic leverage to get better commercial along those corridors versus areas that are less dense, you typically get more of an inferior lease rate and a lesser commercial-type endeavor along those corridors. Zoning compliance, they are complied only through that special use permit in the CCS, and they would have to meet the bulk placement standards in code and would be reviewed at the time of site development. Implementation of the special use permit, will or will not conform with the, with this? Going in at what they provide, so on here, you've got 76 units on a 4.2, that's without density bonus. So how that's extrapolated is right here, minimum lot area per dwelling in it, 2,400 square feet. So once you calculate that out for 4.2 acres, base would be 76 units. But they're proposing 96, which is about a 26% density increase. Now, city code does allow for up to thirty, but what that entails is you have to provide a minimum of two amenities in your open space. And then you have, for each additional amenity, you get a ten percent bonus. And we kinda go into this on the next slides of what they're providing, but they do provide, as far as code's concerned, the ability to ask for the ninety-six units, and typically, if it was like an R three, staff would approve that because they meet the code requirements. Now, we'll go on to the nine point six-seven acre piece. At that same twenty-four hundred, you get the one hundred and seventy-five unit base without the bonus, and they're proposing one ninety-two, which is a ten percent density increase. So here is the provided amenities that they're proposing. So on their sites, they got seven. They got the community garden, barbecue and gazebo, that counts as two, and then you can see the other ones that are individuals. They got seven, so they, they meet that requirement for a bonus. The other site, you can see here, they're providing the same amenities, the seven, so they would meet that requirement as well for that site. Any questions for me at this point?
When we ask for those community amenities, are there individual standards for each? Like, do we define what a dog park is?
Yeah, we have a list, it's codified. So we're not asking, our code says you get, you gotta provide two. And if you wanna go above that minimum density, you have to provide additional amenities in order to qualify and get those.
I think the question was whether there are specific standards for each of those amenities, aside from listing them out. Do you define what?
In that case, no. As far as the pickleball court, we don't have pickleball court design standards. We don't have dog park or horseshoe pit design standards.
Is there like a percentage of the land area or something that has to be allocated to those things?
For the open space, it's based on bedrooms, so if you have a one bedroom, I believe it's a hundred and fifty square feet per unit, and if it's two or more, it's three hundred square feet per unit. And so that's then what establishes the amount of open space.
Is the open space, can you then develop these community amenities in that open space allocation? Or are these community amenities in addition to open space if you want the density increase? Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, the way the code's drafted up is you would put the, generally speaking, you'd be allowed to stick these amenities in that qualifying open space.
Okay. I'm just asking.
Because if it was, potentially, if these had to be outside of that open space qualifying area, you'd be disincentivizing providing amenities, because, you know, you'd be, it'd be honing in on providing the minimum then.
Okay. One question about traffic. With Early Dawn and Hope, and this is just me not remembering, are there traffic signals right now at Highway forty-one for both of those?
I think there's gonna be a really good opportunity to talk about traffic. There's a, when I get to the traffic and the engineering-related stuff,
Okay.
I could call up Rob Paulus, the city engineer,
Okay.
and he could have fun with every transportation question you might have.
Great.
All right, so going on to review criteria B, whether the proposed use constitutes an allowable special use. So you see here, this is where you got that CCS, that community commercial zone, you got the multifamily, three or more units per structure, and that S symbolizing why we're here tonight and why they're doing the ask. Third criteria, whether the proposed use will or will not be compatible with the health, safety, and welfare of the public, or with the land uses in the vicinity. So if a multifamily project is directly abutting a single family, we treat the multifamily as if it's commercial currently. We changed our code, but we treat it as commercial, and that it needs mitigating measures. Meaning, they would provide a ten-foot buffer landscaping, putting in so many deciduous and evergreen trees and shrubs, mitigating that impact. In the case of when there's a Zoros Road like this, they're not abutting, so the buffer typically wouldn't be applied in this situation. But we do treat multifamily as if it's commercial. Hence, being by the arterial and collectors nexus also mirrors how we would treat most commercial. Now we're getting closer to Chris's question. So, looking at transportation, the proposed projects are adjacent to, I already stated this, arterial and collectors. Through site development improvements, these improve roadways, assist cars, bikes, people that move around the corridor. A traffic study is required to assist deciding if more changes are necessary, stoplights and/or roundabouts to keep traffic moving safely and efficiently. And typically, multifamily uses do provide less traffic than a outright commercial use. Looking at the water reclamation, the site would be connected to the city's water reclamation facility. There's facilities nearby on Early Dawn and Zoros. SUP twenty-five two is subject to the Twelfth Avenue force main surcharge, or it's for the surcharge basin, which may limit development of the property at the time of site plan. And then approval of the SUP, as twenty-four seven should include a requirement of the property to be subject to the Twelfth Avenue force main surcharge limitations, as identified in the annexation agreement. That impacts twenty-five two. Domestic water would be provided by, like I already stated. So, this is the time for Rob, so if you have any traffic, should I just bring him up?
Yes.
Sure, yes, please.
Good evening, Commissioner. Robert Paulus, city engineer. What questions do you have on transportation? My questions were primarily just about the access out to Highway forty-one, what's there currently, and how that's gonna handle the, you know, potential four hundred or plus residents of this project. Are there existing signals at those two intersections?
So, at Highway forty-one and Hope Avenue, there is a traffic signal that was installed with the recent widening of Highway forty-one, and the city participated in that with some developer cash-out dollars and impact fees towards that. Hope Avenue itself, in its construction, at about three hundred and fifty or four hundred feet east of Highway forty-one, it turns into a dirt road and is a more of a driveway situation at this time. We've called out in the staff report, and prior to that, the developer, or the applicant in this case, has also identified that with development of the site, that they would put in the necessary road improvements, which would be a minimum of a twenty-eight-foot-wide road in the area that doesn't front them. In the area that fronts them, it would be centerline of the roadway plus ten feet, so that you would have asphalt connection for emergency services, as well as the people who are living there and in the Foxtail subdivision to get from Zoros Road over to Highway forty-one. So that would be a benefit to the city and its overall transportation system.
Okay.
One road to the south, which would be the Early Dawn roadway, that is a paved roadway at present. It is a three-quarter turn access on Highway forty-one. That means that traffic on Highway forty-one can make lefts or rights in, but traffic on Early Dawn itself can only make a right turn onto State Highway forty-one. That is part of the Highway forty-one's master plan to try to preserve capacity on that roadway, as well as safety.
So if residents here wanted to go to the south on forty-one, they're gonna either go up to Hope or down to Poline?
That is correct, and as you saw in the staff report, there is the request that as part of the site plan review process, because of the number of apartments involved, that they would go through a transportation impact analysis to take a look at the Poline and Zoros Road intersection to see whether or not that intersection would be getting to the point that a roundabout or traffic signal would need to go in there. There is in the city's transportation master plan and capital improvement plan, which is part of the impact fee report, a future traffic control device at that intersection. It's just right now, it is listed as a long-term project, which would be beyond the year twenty-thirty. However, we think it's prudent to go back in and take a look, because the current study is based upon twenty-seventeen completion and twenty-fourteen traffic data. We have collected twenty-twenty-three traffic data and are updating the transportation master plan, which is anticipated to be done the fall of this year. But, we do need to check and make sure that we aren't creating a capacity issue at that intersection.
Okay.
So with this nearly, what is it? Three hundred? New apartments?
Mm-hmm.
It's about two cars per apartment? Is that about what you'd think?
So, from a traffic engineering standpoint, I don't really look at it that way. We look at it more from trip generation manual, which for a multifamily-type complex, you're going to see around nine and a half trips per day generated per unit, so three hundred times nine, so two thousand seven hundred trips per day.
On that on Zoros Road?
Well, you're gonna, if you, when you get into doing the analysis, not all those trips are gonna be on Zoros Road. A portion of them will be on Early Dawn, a portion of them are gonna be on Hope Avenue, and then a portion is gonna use Zoros to head south to Poline Avenue. And if we take a look at build-out plus ten years, we do anticipate that within ten years, Zoros would be extended all the ways up to Prairie Avenue, which that, again, that gets back into why we're doing the traffic analysis. We wanna look at the initial impacts of, if they develop that today, what's their build-out for it? How does that impact the existing roadway network? And then they would also be required to take a look at, when they're done building on all of the site, ten years beyond that, what is the traffic going to look like? So we would anticipate that Zoros would be connected up to Prairie Avenue, and then the traffic patterns would be different in the build-out plus ten analysis.
Wouldn't that analysis, shouldn't that be done before we look at this?
The reason we're not looking at it ahead of time is because the use, the use falls within what we anticipate along the Highway forty-one corridor. Zoros Road is a minor collector roadway, so it's anticipated that it can handle, or it's designed to be able to handle around four thousand vehicles per day. And your peak hour volumes on a collector roadway, you're looking at around nine hundred to a thousand trips per hour per lane. So, the road capacity is there to handle the long-term use. Our concern is more the short-term initial, saying, okay, if you're going to pull a building permit for this, what are the immediate impacts? And if you grant a special use permit today, they could still sit one or two years before they move forward in going through the site plan review process. So we wanna tie the impacts to when they come in to go through site plan review. That way, there's also background projects that could be occurring, which could mitigate what they have for impacts.
Well, you just said four thousand trips a day?
Twenty-seven hundred.
Well, for that, but that road could?
Oh, that roadway, yes, by its classification.
Because you have Foxtrot right there, all their traffic, too.
Not all the traffic on Foxtail goes down Zoros. You also have a quarter mile to the east, Fenecus Road, which is a major collector roadway, which is designed for up to, I don't remember the number, it's around eight thousand trips per day, though. You also have, as that area develops, Hope Avenue, which we mentioned is a signalized intersection at Highway forty-one. It is currently constructed as a paved roadway from Zoros Road all the ways to the east out to Meyer. Fenecus will eventually be connecting up to Prairie Avenue as well. So, as these other roadways go in, you distribute the traffic through your road network, and so you're not going to see all that traffic on just one or two roads.
So with the traffic study, say something comes up that's not currently identified, they would be required to work on that before?
Yes, we would require mitigation at that time, prior to approving the site plan review. And in terms of the traffic control device at Poline and Zoros Road, if that was triggered, because it is an impact fee project, the city of Post Falls would be responsible for a majority of the cost of that improvement. We would also have to take a look at what we have for available funding, but it is something that the city would be responsible for reimbursing a developer for, if they are putting it in ahead of our normal time.
Okay.
And just one more question, at least I have one more question. When I'm looking at the kind of these conceptual site plans for both of these projects, we're not technically approving those plans. That's just a exhibit for the special use permit. They may modify that or whatever, when it comes time to actual construction.
It's a general concept, it could change. Now, we did make comments within the transportation-related portion here, that we do and are looking at maintaining the two access points onto Zoros Road between these two. The single point of access onto Hope Avenue and the single point of access onto Early Dawn. In fact, we called out to, that the applicant would need to provide additional rights-of-way on the north side of Early Dawn from their driveway approach to the west, so that that could accommodate some additional on-street parking without reducing road width and impacting maintenance and operations of the roadway, or capacity of the roadway.
Okay, and it looks like, just in general, the way that these two projects have been laid out preliminarily, they're set back pretty far from Zoros, at least the buildings are. So we've got, you know, the public right-of-way with the sidewalks, probably drainage swales, curbs, gutters, all that stuff. And then some landscape areas, then you've got the parking, more access, interior access roads and so forth, parking, and then the buildings. And on the flip side of Zoros, when we look at the Foxtail addition, it's kind of a similar thing. Those homes don't front to Zoros. That's their kind of back fence, and they're set back pretty far from Zoros as well. So they've got their curbs, gutters, sidewalks, drainage swales, and so forth. So, we're gonna end up with a fairly wide right-of-way, kind of breaking up where the single family is versus the multifamily of this project, is what it looks like to me when I look at that.
I would, I see the same thing, yes.
Just a comment.
What is the difference in R three and the CCS in density?
That I would have to turn back over to Mr. Manley.
So before, I do wanna make one thing clear, that this is a conceptual plan that theoretically, depending on how things were approved, but they would have the right such that they meet other design principles
Sure.
in our code to move things around. It may be difficult to do much different, because we do require the open space to be centrally located. Additionally, for our parking requirements, it'd probably be difficult for them to do much anything different, for them to meet the parking requirements for multifamily. So, I don't foresee thematically, like zoomed out, how this could morph too much, but they would have the ability, if they got creative, to change things around a little bit.
Yes.
As far as the density for R three and the special use permit, they're off the cuff without other conditions, they would be the same entitlements. Like I said, though, we went over those six things that you are allowed to review as part of the planning zoning commission, that is not an opportunity with the R three. So that is how the SUP can actually raise the bar above what a typical R three would be. So that is the advantage of the SUP over the R three. So then we got the fourth criteria, whether the proposed use will or will not comply with the goals and policies found in the comprehensive plan. So I got two here, that kind of, when I work together, grow and sustain a balanced, resilient economy for Post Falls, providing community prosperity with fiscal health, and the other goal, plan for and establish types and qualities of land use in Post Falls, supporting community needs and the city's long-term sustainability. We recently had approved a housing needs assessment, and I think it was, you know, we all can recollect. I think every sector was more or less deficient, and there are some fiscal realities with housing in Post Falls of the lack of opportunity and the cost of housing. cost of housing continually to grow up. So we would have to look at the balance of that. Currently, a third of Post Falls is multifamily housing. I don't foresee the demand changing that request, not saying it's gonna be facilitated, but, you know, I don't, at this time, I don't, I've not read anything that would change that model of, of opportunities and provisions for housing.
You say a third?
Yeah, we're about one-third.
How many are built out and how many are waiting to be built?
Um, currently, that's, I think that's mostly built-out numbers for the third, or permit-issued multifamily. When I do the population projections, I think we're just under, like, around thirty-two percent, I believe. So as far as, like, future ones, we have a few projects, but not a ton sitting out there. We got one up at Tullamore that is fairly large on the west side, where I can kinda show you where that's at on a future slide, so I can show you now, actually, right here. Tullamore, these, right south of the school, that project right now, they do have entitlements to build multifamily at that site, just north of their multifamily project by the park. And so there's that site. In this quadrant of Post Falls, off the top of my head, I can't know of any additional apartments that have entitlements. Then the other ones would be out towards Cabela's. There's a project that's approved east of Cabela's on the north side of the main road. There's that project. Most of the apartments that are east of Beck Road have been developed, there's an additional phase of Apartments twenty-six that has a second phase there, but most of those apartments that you've seen there and on I-90 have been-
Some majority are built.
There, yep. There's some, Montrose have had some entitlements since the beginning in their conception in the nineties, they never even pulled those, so they have a few, a couple sites that they could do those. Who knows what they're gonna end up. North Place East does have an opportunity for some multifamily on-
The reason I'm asking is 'cause the number one thing I hear from people in Post Falls is so many apartments, and then the traffic congestion because of it. I mean, they're screaming about the traffic congestion as I am, and I, I'm surprised it's actually a third of the population is apartments.
Well, you do, like, they're small sites, but there's a lot of units per those sites, so it does add up into-
Right.
You know, you can consume three hundred acres and not get as, near as many units as single family.
Right.
But if you look at the landmass, the landmass for R3 or apartments would be significantly less than a third.
What's our vacancy factor? Do you, no, I can't remember off the top of my head, I know I was told not too long ago, but in multifamily. Do you, I do?
I should've-
I know, I should've, I didn't even-
I do not have the most current rate, but I do believe that when we're getting done with the housing needs, I believe we're in the, right around eight percent.
Yeah, I thought it was pretty low, I remember-
Well, it's still above, I mean, the target line for apartments is anywhere from right around five to, you know, six percent, seven percent vacancy rate, for a healthy rate in that range. We've been sitting around two and three. When we permit a lot of apartments, we may go up as high temporarily to twelve, thirteen, but then they get consumed, and then there's a buy-down rate, and so apartment builders look at this vacancy rate, I think using CoStar as one of their tools, and they can see when is it worth them to come put some apartments online, and then that's when they would go ahead, and you generally pull the trigger, is they, they monitor the vacancy rate themselves on their own financial endeavors.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Goals ten and fifteen, provide and support Post Falls parks and recreational opportunities on pace with growth. This goal is generally facilitated through impact fees, they pay at the time of development with each unit, they pay their impact fees, and some of that money goes towards the parks to program in, to assist them on, on their improvements to the community. Goal fifteen, maintain and improve city's water and sewer infrastructure, anticipating future needs regarding population and regulatory conditions. You look at some of this tonight, you saw some of the surcharges, so they pay their sewer cap fees, and they have their surcharges, and that's their contribution as part of development to assist some of these infrastructure endeavors and goals for the community. Now, moving on to some policies, support land use patterns and maintain and enhance communities' level of service, foster long-term fiscal health, maintain and enhance quality, residents' quality of life, promote compatible, well-designed development, and implement goals, policies in the comprehensive plan related to master plans and facility plans. So this image here is an attempt to kind of communicate what is going on at this corridor related to that policy. So you have Highway forty-one, which has, you know, been expanded, a lot of cars travel north-south. Adjacent to that, in these boxes, you see planned future commercial. So at that point in time, I mean, investors are looking at this, and there's landowners that are marketing this as commercial properties, to take advantage of those, that car traffic. Also, we do have future population projections of this area, where that gives some input for those owning those properties, knowing that, okay, we do have some apartments that's planned right here on the west side of forty-one, we do have traffic counts, and so as they market those properties, they become more marketable as you get some of these developed, or as they become realized to get higher-grade commercial along those, this corridor. With these improvements, we've already referenced tonight, you do get these access points improved, so an area that was maybe a gravel road or unimproved service, you get those improved. That does allow communities out to the east to use those to access hopefully some more neighborhood, some type commercials that is along forty-one. You do also have some employment bases, whether it's a futical, future medical campus on the southeast corner of Prairie Forty-one. We do, at some day, have this future regional commercial industrial area to the northwest of Prairie and forty-one, and then we have a developing regional commercial medical, some medical on the northeast, northeast corner of Prairie. So all of these do rely on some employment base, and so by having diversified housing opportunities and having road connectivity and improved roadways, does tie into policy one a bit. And so, and that's for you guys to consider, you know, on one of these proposals, whether they may or may not tie in. I'm not gonna belabor policy two, I think we've kind of talked about this quite a bit, but you know, it's looking at, you know, does the zone and, and does the implementing aspects, is it consistent to the future land use map, compatibility with standard surrounding uses, infrastructure, future traffic patterns, what we discussed. Looking at the future land use designation, business, commercial, it does state to include commercial and a mix of moderate to high-density housing types within walking distance of that commercial corridor use. So once again, you're seeing that theme that gets communicated throughout our goals and policies and, and our land use designations of connectivity and connecting citizens to commercial opportunities or places of employment. Here's the forty-one north focus area. See here that it does suggest provisions for multifamily, commercial, and tech uses near higher classified roadways. Infrastructure service plans, as cited in the staff report, I think most of this was discussed with Rob about the connectivity of these infrastructure sites and the roads. Policy nineteen, encourage cluster of units in residential development, providing service efficiencies and creating opportunities to provide, or community open space, private or community open space. So this is the, the private, and I already talked about how impact fees goes into that community aspect. And this is a type of clustering. Consider location of multi-development in areas for the following, I believe we've discussed most of this. Here's the agencies that are notified, here is the comments. School district, they're remain neutral. Fire district, they generally would develop on these types of things, coordinate with us at time of site plan to make sure that they have access to these facilities and have a safe egress. County County Community Development, they had no comments. Yellowstone Pipeline had new utilities within the project, the police department, they did submit an exhibit, they did have some service call concerns, and they did propose some conceptual mitigation measures. Idaho Department of Environmental Quality, they said there is no environmental impacts that they were concerned about, and the highway district had no comment. Any questions for me?
Could you tell me, what's, what's the height, maximum height in, 'cause I, I think I saw this, these will be four stories.
In the CCS, it's forty-five feet.
And so multifamily, it would be, what will these be? So that's a max they could go, as the forty-four feet, and if it stayed CCS, something could be built there forty-four feet also, right? Either way?
Yeah, you could have a commercial building forty-five feet-
That's what I mean, forty-five feet.
-or a multifamily structure forty-five feet, yes.
Okay, thank you.
On the letter from the police department, what does crime prevention through environmental design mean?
To be honest, it's the first I've kind of embraced that, I haven't even really fully digested what that, that means. I did talk it over with Chris, I don't know if Chris wants to chime in on, on this, this matter.
It's the City of Covington deal here.
I think the, the piece of paper you have there, the applicant, I think did do some research, and I think was wanting to comment in regards to that particular aspect on that.
And in following up with the police, with Captain Brandt, on that issue, he said that the CPTED-based layout was suggesting we consider those points beneath it, adequate lighting, emergency access plans for law enforcement, and visible unit numbering and directional signage. There weren't more specific design requirements they were looking at, he was more or less concerned on potential increases in service calls per unit. And I'll let the applicant address how they would propose to respond to those, but those were about as specific as he could get.
Okay.
And we do have a representative of the police department here that may or may not be able to address any of those specific concerns, if you'd like.
And so these, these seven conditions here, John, these are recommended conditions?
That are in the staff report?
Yeah.
Yes, so items could be added to it. And I do have here, once again, these are, up there, additional conditions, which I can bring up again when you guys deliberate on the matter, if you guys want me to bring this up, I can pull this up. As we go through, we'll be going through these individually, and I can leave this up on the screen.
Yeah.
Have these lots of land been brought for us before in the past, or city council?
I believe the Early Dawn did come forward as an R3, and it got denied on the pretense that the Highway forty-one was not improved yet. So that was a while ago then.
But we didn't, we just, we didn't, we just do a zone change on them recently?
Yeah, the annexation, yeah, so, I could be, I think it was an annexation in our three proposal before that got denied.
Not a zone change.
Not a zone change.
It was an annexation-
Yeah.
-for the two, two properties to the south.
On, and the applicant-
That wasn't, that wasn't these parcels.
I think this one here, and the applicant can correct me when they, but I think this parcel, this nine points, did come forward as an R3 proposal at one point in time, and was denied, at that time was told, wait until forty-one was complete.
But it, but at some point, it came in and was annexed.
Yeah, recently, yeah, recently they came forward as another annexation proposal, but this time as CCS.
Yes, and we, and you, you folks-
So it was not annexed previously, the initial annexation, the initial zone was CCS.
True.
Right, yeah, I think I remember.
Yep. Sorry if I added confusion to that.
So it got denied as R3, came back, got approved as CCS. Now it's jumping back to basically R3. That's what they're asking for.
Potentially, and like I initial, they are coming back with multifamily project with R3, but you do have these six things that you would not have had, afforded the ability as an R3.
If they had gotten the R3, it would be by right, essentially.
Correct.
They wouldn't be here.
So there's things you can visit tonight that would not have been able to be discussed or entertained if it would have been accepted as an R3?
I know we've talked about the sewer capacity coming up Fenecus, and that needs to be extended when we're going all the way up to Prairie for some of the projects up by peak health and wellness. Is this project impacted by that lack of capacity as well?
Sewer question, I'd call up Rob.
Okay.
In terms of sanitary sewer, this project does not discharge into that Fenecus line or the future portion of Fenecus, which does not exist. This project is within the area from Zorros Road to the west is all identified in our tri, in our sewer master plan as going down the Highway forty-one-
Okay.
-main line. Do have, and that's why we have the surcharge, the Twelfth Avenue, Forest Main, where the city last, oh, this was two years ago now, the city constructed the first three-quarters of a mile of that sanitary sewer, Forest Main, which will go to the wastewater treatment plant. The next phase of that is scheduled for next summer, and then the city is working towards getting that extended all the ways out to the treatment plant, but that's why in that surcharge, it discusses, in the annexation agreement that went with the underlying land, that there is the ability and there is the potential that if everything was to develop really fast out there and we couldn't keep up with that Forest Main extension, we could limit growth on parcels that have been identified.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for John? All right.
I do, I do, I just have one thing. John, can we condition that there's no exits onto Zorro Road as part of, of the development?
I would defer to, I don't know if no exits onto Zorros isn't the best interest for this, I would ask Rob what his take is, is having no egress better for the other roads, that then now you're taking all that traffic and you're not dispersing it. I would think that having some dispersment, but I, once again, would like Rob to chime in on that particular inquiry.
Or Rob doesn't get to sit down.
As soon as he does, that's-
Members of the commission, Robert Paul, city engineer, I do not disagree with what Mr. Manley said, and for the same reasons, I would think that an access or two onto Zorros Road would be good, because Zorros Road is a collector roadway, and you want to be putting the traffic onto your collector roadways.
But pretty much anybody going onto Zorros is, is gonna turn onto Hope or Early Dawn to either get over forty-one or, well, right?
So today, if they were, if, if there was an apartment complex there today, most likely you'd see, in my opinion, most of the traffic would be going quickly to Hope Avenue, because that's a really quick spot to get to the signal, onto Highway forty-one to go north-south or wherever you want. If you went down to Zorros, down to Pole Line today, you have a stop sign there. It's gonna be a little bit of a delay getting onto Pole Line Avenue, a little bit more difficult making a left turn. Go five to ten years in the future, and Zorros Road is connected all the ways through to Prairie Avenue, Zorros is gonna be a fairly convenient way to get up to Prairie if you wanted to take that into Corde Lane. You may want to take Hope across to Meyer, then down to Pole Line, and then, there's a number of different ways to go, it depends where is that traffic going. We see most of the traffic from the area heading southbound on Highway forty-one to get to I-90 and then go to their destinations. More of that traffic, I think, would be heading, if they went onto forty-one down to I-90, would be heading towards Spokane. The stuff that's heading towards Corde Lane would probably utilize Pole Line Avenue or Prairie Avenue. If it's a job that's more in the downtown area, then yes, they may go down to I-90 again.
So Rob, isn't Zorros and Fenecus planned to provide a supportive functionality of Highway forty-one to extend the life of it, to give people-
Frontage roads.
-frontage road opportunities to it?
So Zorros and Fenecus are identified as baggage roads to the Highway forty-one system, so the intention of them is to distribute the traffic in the immediate area north-south so that it can get to Highway forty-one and not reduce capacity on Highway forty-one by people having to go out to Highway forty-one to go a quarter mile north and then back off, so-
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. All right, invite the applicant up.
Good evening, my name is Austin Fuller, twenty-one South Pines Road, Spokane Valley, Washington, nine-nine-two-zero-six. Today I'll be talking about the Hope and Zorros, SUP twenty-four-seven, and Early Dawn and Zorros, SUP twenty-five-two. I've shown here a site vicinity map. We're talking about these two sites here. This one is the Hope and Zorros and this one is the Early Dawn and Zorros one. This is the Early Dawn site and then the Hope site. And then this is an aerial we took of the site that shows both of the, both of the sites with the apartments down to the south and then the single family over here to the west. And then to the north there is Hope Avenue, which has not been built out yet. This is another site that shows Hope Avenue, another photo. And then this is the one for the Early Dawn. And a third one for the Early Dawn. So this is our site data table. I'll go over this pretty quickly. The Early Dawn site is one parcel. That's approximately nine-point-six-seven acres. The zoning is CCS. Our allowed density under eighteen dwelling units per acre is a hundred seventy-four units. Then we have the bonus density of thirty percent, which would be an additional fifty-two units. Our total allowed density would be two-hundred-twenty-six units with the density bonus and we're proposing one-hundred-ninety-two. And then for the Hope site, one parcel again, approximately four-point-one-four acres. CCS zone, allowed density at eighteen dwelling units per acre would be seventy-five units. The bonus density for the amenities would be twenty-one units. So our total allowed density would be ninety-six and we're proposing ninety-six units. This is a site plan of the Hope site and as you can see, the apartments are mostly here on the western two-thirds of the site and the portion of the site that abuts Foxtail Seventh is the garages, which are single-story. And then these are the open space calculations. So this is our amenity space, not necessarily just our open space. I'll kind of show this on the next, on next image, but our required open space based on the unit count is twenty-one thousand six hundred square feet. And then our minimum provided amenity space is twenty-five thousand nine hundred forty-eight square feet. So we meet that standard. And then this is the site data table. I went over everything already. I will point out that there, we have approximately a hundred sixty-nine parking spaces provided, which would be seventy-three parking stalls and approximately ninety-six garages. This is our landscape plan. As you can see, along the frontage of Zorros and along the frontage of Hope for this site, we do have street trees as well as shrubs. And then in our amenity space, we have plenty of street tree, or plenty of trees and then shrubs as well for landscaping. Then our site plan for Early Dawn. So this is what I was talking about earlier. This is our amenity space here in the green. We do have additional open space kind of around the apartments that isn't calculated in this number, but we do have more open space than what we have written here. So our total required open space for this site would be forty-three thousand two hundred square feet and then we're providing forty-four thousand two hundred fifty-one square feet of amenity space. This is the site data table. I went over the site data earlier. We're providing four-hundred-thirty-five parking spaces with approximately two-hundred forty-three stalls and then approximately a hundred ninety-two garages. And again, where we front on single family, we're pushed back and we have the, the garages kind of between the apartments and then the single family. This is our landscape plan. Again, we have street trees as well as bushes near the garages and then our internal space, we have a lot of trees and shrubs. So the zoning map, this is for the Early Dawn site. This is in the CCS zone. And then for the Hope site, this is also in the CCS zone. Future land use map for both of these would be business commercial. So we had a set of criteria. We went through all of them. I'm only going to go over the criteria for the Planning and Zoning Commission. However, I did put all these in the PowerPoint and this just is the requirements. So this is that an application with a description of the use proposed had to be submitted to the zoning administrator, which it was. B is the requirements that John came over or Mr. Manley discussed about the hearing that is tonight. So this is, item one is whether implementation would or would not conform to the purposes of the zoning district. So this does conform and then I brought up the bonus density that we had. We've provided a play structure, community garden, picnic table and barbecue area, which counts as two amenities, two sports courts, an internal courtyard, a connected internal trailer and sidewalk system, and then a dog park. So those are the amenities that we're proposing for this project. Item two is whether it is an allowable special use as established for the zoning district involved and then also requirements of the city and state. So this is an allowable special use as established by the municipal code, chapter eighteen sixteen. And then section sixty-seven dash sixty-five twelve of the Idaho State Statute creates provisions for special use permits. And I have a photo of the existing apartments and this is from, will give me just a moment. This is just south of Early Dawn. This, uh, these are the existing Bluegrass Farms apartments and then this is one of the roads and this is Zorros here. Item three is whether the proposed use will or will not be compatible with the health, safety and welfare. So yes, we believe this will be compatible with health, safety and welfare of the public and with land uses in the vicinity. This project will create a reasonable buffer between CCS commercial and then single family. I have a couple of images here. So on the left you see a commercial use, which is, you know, it's big, flat panel and there's very minimal landscaping. And then on the right is the apartments use, which has significant landscaping. And our right image shows, and I'll have a bigger photo of this, the landscaping that's proposed and then the fact that the apartments that we have in the existing Bluegrass Farms have height variances. So it breaks up the, the view and it prevents it from being just a big, flat, commercial structure. Item four is whether the proposed use will or will not comply with the goals and policies in the comprehensive plan. So we brought up goal one and goal seven, as Mr. Manley did, and then we also brought up goal eight and goal nine, which talks about scenic and natural areas and then natural resources. And the reasoning for that is that by creating apartments, we're minimizing the square footage of the residences and we're protecting area that's not being developed on the prairie. Policy one, support land use patterns that maintain or enhance community levels of service and foster the long-term fiscal health of the community. Apartments do provide fiscal growth to a city and they provide a buffer between single family and commercial. And they provide amenities that reduce the burden on public parks and facilities. Policy eight, encourage in, uh, compatible infill development, redevelopment. The, both properties are either vacant or underused properties within the city limits. Policy fifteen, ensure that adequate land is available for future housing needs. So apartments provide housing to younger residents who can't afford a single-family residence, older or retired residents or single people who do not need or want the space. And then also the stairs, so single-family residential typically has two stories. And so people can be going up and down the stairs multiple times a day to go to the kitchen, go to their bedroom, go to the kitchen again, go to the living room, that sort of thing. And this, in apartments, they don't have to go up and down those stairs multiple times a day. Encourage clustering, policy nineteen of units and new residential development. So the proposed apartments create private open space that will reduce the demand on public open space. They already have these amenities right next door to them, so they're not going to go out and use the parks that are nearby. This is kind of a image that shows some of the amenities that we have in the Bluegrass Farms apartments. As you can see, uh, on this top image, you have a swimming pool and then to the left you can see a gym area and then kind of a living room area. And then on the bottom image, you can see a pool table. There's an outdoor barbecue area, indoor kitchenette and then kind of a large TV. Policy twenty is consider location of multifamily development that has access to arterial and collector streets, buffers higher and lower intensity development patterns. We talked about that already. But Zorros, Early Dawn, Hope and Pole Line are all arterial or collector roads. Policy twenty-one maintains standards for multifamily housing that encourage quality building design, landscaping, usable open space. So the proposed apartments will buffer and are compatible with both single-family dwellings and higher intensity commercial developments to the east and proposed commercial or future commercial to the east. Policy twenty-six and twenty-seven are both about continuity of sidewalks, trails, bicycle paths and street connectivity. The proposed apartments will provide sidewalk and landscaping along street frontages. This is an example of a commercial development in the area that has very minimal landscaping to it and minimal sidewalk. And as you can see in the back, the, the maintenance of the landscaping or the area to the back is very minimal and also the landscaping behind the structure is minimal. This is another one. Uh, as you can see, there's a loading bay. I'll talk about that a little bit. But also the landscaping here is very minimal and there's no incentive to keep that maintained that there would be with apartments. With apartments, we want to keep people in there, so we want to keep them landscaping maintained and we want it to look nice. But with commercial, there's no incentive to keep the landscaping maintained. Or there's very little incentive. These are the apartments. As you can see, we have plenty of landscaping on our side, uh, which are the Bluegrass Farms apartments. And then on the other side, this is the vacant land that is proposed to be developed and the, uh, the sidewalk would be mirrored on this site here if approved. This is a requirement that, or this talks about the Planning and Zoning Commission may attach the conditions that Mr. Manley talked about, the six conditions. So this is noted. We intend to comply with any conditions. We wanted to bring up that there are already conditions on this property. That is a grant of right-of-way on Zorros Road and Early Dawn up to a total of eighty feet of right-of-way. Grant of fifteen-foot sidewalk utility and drainage easement along Early Dawn and then a ten-foot easement along Zorros for the same utility sidewalk and drainage. This is kind of our, uh, we call it the triptych of, you know, photos that we have. So this is the single family that's already existing on along Zorros Road. Then we have this photo, which shows our apartments and the landscaping that we have proposed, as well as the garages, which are, would be up against the, the road and those garages are single-story. So the apartments are not going to be looking right down on people. There's going to be that garage buffer. And then on this side, this is the improvements that are shown on the left and then to the right is the unapproved parcel. This is even further facing north. These are single-family dwelling units and there's very minimal landscaping here. Of course, our proposal has more landscaping than that. Again, these are the apartments that we have that are existing and you can see there's shrubs and there are proposed street tree, or there are street trees that are still growing and then the garages, which are single-story. This talks about the approval or denial of the application and the decision. We all know about this. We noted, we asked the Planning and Zoning Commission to grant acceptance of the special use permit. And these last ones are mostly comments or spots of the code that we have noted as part of this application process. There were three public comments that we received in total over all three projects. There were a few concerns that were noted that we wanted to address right away. The first one was density. So this proposed density is allowed in the zoning code, including with the density bonus. There were concerns about views. Uh, this use is allowed under a special use permit and then other allowed uses that don't require a special use permit may impact residents in the Foxtail subdivision more than this proposal. Could be office space, could be anything up to forty-five feet that would be allowed. I'll talk about that in the next slide. Construction dust, that's a code enforcement issue and is not related to approval of this special use permit. There are comments about the rural community, so this property is already within the CCS zone and proposes a use allowed under a special use permit. Apartments take up less space per resident than the traditional single-family residences and they minimize the spread of urban sprawl or single-family units that go out into the prairie and then you've got, well, Phoenix, Arizona for one, just single family. Allowed uses in the CCS zone and then these are, these are encouraged in the focus area forty-one north and these are, uh, uses that we think would adversely impact the single-family uses more than the apartments. That would include nursing homes, residential care, room and board, hotel, motel and tourist court. That would include retail or grocery stores. Those have semi-trucks that go in and out throughout the day. Leaving my house, sometimes I run into a semi-truck that backs out across the street and you just kind of have to wait for it. And those, this, you know, that happens quite often. Uh, office of up to five stories, of course, the forty-five foot maximum applies. Automobile dealership or automotive repair, those would require trucks to carry in the automobiles. Hospital, casino, bingo halls, gambling establishments, these are permitted. Bar, tavern or lounge, we feel that those would be a little more noisy than apartments would be and they wouldn't be beneficial to the single-family uses nearby. Or a warehouse and retail combination. I have some photos. This is a photo we took, uh, from the drone and it kind of shows this commercial property that's already next to the Bluegrass Farms apartments and it shows the, uh, the level of kind of landscaping that was on that CCS zone as opposed to our landscaping that is shown here. These are more photos of the allowed use. And that could be on this site potentially. Would not require a special use permit. And then this is another photo of the apartments that we have, uh, the Bluegrass Farms apartments. And so I wanted to take a couple of moments to discuss some of the police comments that we received. To go over that briefly, uh, the police department has some recommendations, which we could not find much about the CPTED, but I did find the City of Covington, which is in Washington. As you can see, the, the four big points here are natural surveillance, territorial reinforcement, natural access control and then maintenance. So we meet natural surveillance. Apartments generally have windows that people can look out of and keep an eye out. Natural access control, so as part of our site plans, we have very few accesses to the Hope and Zor, or Hope, Zorros, Early Dawn. Territorial reinforcement, so this talks about fencing, pavement treatments, signage and landscaping. The Bluegrass Farms apartments are signed. We do have landscaping. This discourages crime by showing the site, that the site owners care about the space and pay attention to what gathers in it or what occurs in it. And then maintenance, uh, as you can see from our, from the sites that are existing near the area, they're pretty well-maintained. So one of the comments, uh, was adequate lighting, camera systems and gated access. So we do most of those things. The reason why we don't do gated access is because of fire requirements. There are some fire departments that kind of go against that. And, uh, emergency access plans and visible unit numbering and directional signage, we have that sort of thing. I wanted to bring up again the Housing Needs Analysis Report to just kind of go over briefly that we're projected to add in post-falls approximately fifteen-hundred jobs in the next five years and that will increase the demand for housing. Post-falls will need nearly twenty-four-hundred new housing units in the next five years. And two-thirds of the senior renters are cost-burdened. So apartments are self-regulating. People are not going to build apartments when they feel that there's no benefit to them, that the vacancy rate is really high or that they wouldn't be able to charge for that sort of thing. So when the vacancy rate is really low, it incentivizes us to build more apartments, which then lowers the rate kind of around as the demanding lowers and the supply increases. So in closing, uh, we meet the, we meet the criteria for a special use permit. And then we meet the, uh, we have a buffer between the single family, the apartments and then the commercial. Apartments self-regulate, as I just said before. And then, uh, I do want to point out that there is no national standard for the, these, uh, police requirements, but we'd be happy to, if required, to meet with the police and discuss these requirements with them. I believe that's it. We asked the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve this special use permit, or both of the special use permits. Thank you. Thank you.
Questions?
Yeah, I do have a couple of questions. I just want to reemphasize, and you're saying that there, all along Zorros would be garages. They'll back. And then the apartments, right?
Okay, I'm going to go back to this kind of slide here. So yes, these are, this is Zorros right here. And these are the garages, if you can see them right there, they're the the blocks there. This one is Zorros. And that's on both of the sites, yes.
Okay. And then are there onsite managers on these, in these developments? Will there be?
Yes, there will be.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any intention to share amenities across the, what, four or five projects that Douglas has there? Meaning like, some of the common facilities for the existing project are a little bit more extensive, you know? Workout facilities, that kind of thing. Is that, because these are kind of all developed in the line there? Are they truly independent or are they going to be kind of shared somewhere?
They'd be shared? Yeah, they'll be shared.
I'm not looking for a commitment, I'm just wondering what the thought process is.
That's our proposals that they'd be shared.
Questions?
So as far as the amenities go, obviously, Bluegrass has the pool, so that's going to be shared up and down. But for these other ones, to get those bonus density, they'll actually have a whatever, garden, barbecue, pickleball. So those technically, while other people can use, these are going to be on this. They're not technically, they have to go to another one to use it, right?
Yes.
Okay. What business, I just can't recall it right now, off of forty-one in front of the Early Dawn, what business is that right now? That's already developed, right?
Let's discount grocers. Early Dawn is the multi-tenant.
The office warehouse.
Okay, so those, okay. Timing of construction, if you could had an hourglass and you say, this is what we want to do, everything goes through, you're going through the steps, what are you guys thinking, construction?
I might have to defer to my boss on this one. This is Todd Whipple.
Hi, I'm Todd Whipple, how are you? So because we have three of these tonight, I think the intent is, is that we would start at Pole Line. That would be the first, we call it the goat lady place, but we would start at Pole Line and then work our way north with, probably go Pole Line, Early Dawn, and then Hope would probably be the way that the projects would be developed. They would be developed in phases and stages primarily because constructing an apartment building takes so much time, development takes so much time. So how far apart they would be, they would, they would run depends on, you know, when you're moving your concrete guys from A to B to C to D compared to all your other developments that you're working on. But that would be the way that they would be phased. It would be Pole Line, then Early Dawn, and then Hope last. And then horizontal and vertical construction would go from A to B to C. I would assume that since this is twenty-five, we'd probably be looking occupancy sometime in twenty-seven. I'm assuming maybe late twenty-seven for Pole Line and then twenty-eight, twenty-nine for the, for the remainders. So that's probably how it will go. And then while I'm up here, did you have any traffic questions beyond what Rob answered?
I had one more question is, can you remind me what improvements on Hope Avenue will be done? Because obviously, that's a smaller...
We have to do drainage improvements to the center line plus ten or twelve feet so that basically it's still a two-way street with continuity along the center line. And then we have to do, I didn't, I didn't look at this condition, I don't remember what it said in the annexation agreement. We have to do, I don't know if it's a strip pave, remember? A strip pave from where our property ends to the improvements that were constructed as a part of the Highway forty-one improvement. Strip pave will probably be twenty-eight feet wide, fourteen, twenty-six to twenty-eight feet wide. And we have to do sidewalks or anything, when those other properties develop, they would saw cut, widen.
But it would eliminate, because that's a gravel road.
That's a gravel road. And it has no technical access, if you remember the aerial that Austin showed, it has no technical access to Zorros. And so when you look at the developing community, people drive by the, how their pattern, and so that developing community up there, that's north of Hope, north and east of Hope, you know, beyond the school. If, if, if when those people move in and you want to go either direction and you like a signal, because some people are okay without a signal, most people like to get out on a signal, the signal at Hope will be a least busy option than the one at Pole Line. So if I lived in the community, as soon as Hope was connected, I would probably migrate to Hope because it's going to be the easiest, least restrictive way to get back on the Highway forty-one. And so with Early Dawn being a three-quarter movement, right in, right out with the left end, that's convenient at times but inconvenient. So if you're going to head southbound from the, from the area, you're either going to use Pole Line or Hope. And then I wanted to follow up on one other thing. So if you were to look at Ashtoe to answer a question that Rob answered, local roads, which none of these are local roads, they vary from one to four thousand average daily trips per day. And then collector arterials in Ashtoe, the same book, say that it's from one to fifteen thousand for minor arterials and major collectors. So they're designed for a lot of traffic. And when we do traffic studies, remember, we don't look at lane volumes because there's no rational nexus for lane volumes. In other words, does this road have five, eight, or ten thousand cars a day? Alls that does is size the facility. All traffic impacts are based at intersections, which is level of service, which is the, the issue at Zorros and Pole Line is, there's a future roundabout there or some other kind of a traffic control, whichever the city decides. I think it's a roundabout. And so what's going to happen is, is people tend to drive based on, we're all time-based units. When we drive, we're like, the stopwatch starts, how long would it take me to get from A to B, right? And so if all of a sudden that stop sign at Pole Line and Zorros is too much of a hindrance and if Hope is in, they'll just go back to Hope. It's not that, you know, thirty seconds to get up to Hope and go over to Highway forty-one. The two left lanes at Highway forty-one and Pole Line are already starting to get a little busy. And so I'm assuming that when these apartments go in, as they go in along the line, that the traffic study will find out what additional improvements at the intersection of Pole Line and Zorros need to be done. Anything else?
Any other questions?
No.
All right, thank you. Public testimony? So for those that haven't been to the meeting here, I'll go through these. If you're wishing to speak, you can come up here, state your name. You'll have four minutes. We got a timer over here on that desk. There is no back and forth questions. If you do have questions, ask them during that time and then the applicant will come up afterwards and he'll be able to answer most of those questions. First one here, Scott Sherwood, not wishing to speak is neutral. That is all on that one. Robin Lorenzini, hopefully I didn't butcher that too much, not wishing to speak in opposition. I'm opposed to this issue and so have a special use permit for several reasons, including decreased property values, increase in vandalism, increase in crime, unsupported increase in vehicular traffic concerns, personal safety, including young children, and a decrease in our resale value and changing the atmosphere of a wonderful community with non-homeowners having no personal ownership in their apartment. Wishing to speak in opposition, Nick Arnold. You can come up. Name for the record and you have four minutes.
My name's Nick Arnold and I live in Foxtail. And my wife and I, her house backs up against North Zorros. And we do oppose this project because of the impact it's going to have on Zorros. Right now, Zorros is a, is a complete racetrack for people that live around us and the heavy construction. And this past Saturday, we had a individual that was going from on Zorros to go up to Hope, go all the way over to Penticus and back around, and he was running over sixty miles an hour making the whole loops. And there's a nice lady, got very irritated and was, she called the police and luckily for us, the police showed up in a timely manner. And he then took his route and went further up Zorros into the new construction and he was terrorizing that area. And like I said, the police showed up, cornered him, and I don't know whether he got a donation or got some time in jail. But I guess that's our major concern for the fact of the amount of traffic. There's no stop signs. Stop signs are east and west on Early Dawn. And there's no, they put one on Hope, but no one uses that because nothing's coming, going east. So I guess it's kind of boils down to the fact of, I don't know what, any kind of plans for more stop signs or whatever. But that's about what I've got to say on the whole thing. So.
Thank you.
Thanks for listening.
All right, wishing to speak in opposition, Jeff Lorenzini. Did I get that close?
Close enough.
Close enough?
My name's Jeff Lorenzini. I live in Foxtail. Our property backs to Zorros. I've been in the transportation industry for thirty-five years. Appreciate Commissioner Will Holmes' comments on traffic and a lot of what I want to present, I read in a study, there's not a lot of studies that talk about this, but to give credit where credit's due, the study that I sourced is called Not in My Neighborhood by Keith Inlandfelt from the Department of Economics and DeVoe Moore Center for Florida State University, published in May of 2019. I think there's little debate that the rentals of any kind introduced into a single-family residential neighborhood always cause three negative impacts. Number one, negative site externalities. Number two, added congestion, and number three, increased crime. The concern for site externalities change a neighborhood's character. Foxtail is a beautiful neighborhood. It's our dream home that we, we purchased there and moved in in April. Rentals are far less well-maintained than single-family homes because renters are consumers. Single-family homeowners are investors. Added congestion, the only access not through heavy residential parts of the neighborhood is via Early Dawn in Zorros. And I understand that, that Hope is going to be developed. Two of the three access points for Early Dawn are Zorros and Early Dawn. Most people that enter and exit this facility are going to be coming north and going south. So it's going to put most of that traffic on Zorros. Now, the numbers I heard were, Zorros was designed for four thousand trips per day and the projection was that twenty-seven hundred, nearly three-quarters of that traffic is going to be generated by the apartments. But what about the existing apartments that are there now? The existing single-family residences in North and South Foxtail and the new residences that are being built north of Hope? Those all add to the traffic on that road. And then the element of increased crime, some of the points of the study were that criminals expect that there'll be less likelihood of apprehension because in a neighborhood of single-family homes, people generally self-police. They're watching out for their property and their neighbors. That doesn't happen in an apartment complex. Those people are a transactional resident. And so criminals know this. And there's a great concern that criminal activity and vandalism will increase with these apartments. And just the last few points, because I know I'm running out of time. If you look at Post Falls on a map, where's the development going to go? It's going to go north. That's where all the available land is right now. Highway forty-one is going to be the commercial center and the retail center of Central and North Post Falls. With apartments taking up that valuable land adjacent and along Highway forty-one, it's going to squeeze out where people can go for goods and services as opposed to having apartments there. So I, and the last thing is, is I know the zoning can go to forty-five feet. I don't care if it's an eighty-foot set back off the road, somebody's going to be looking into my backyard and back window from four stories up. And if that was you living on the other side of Zorros, I think you'd find that disturbing as well.
Thank you. All right, wishing to speak in opposition, Julie Hensley.
Julie Hensley, thirteen sixty East Warm Springs. Good evening. With a special use, I would ask that there be no density bonus. A recent study done by a third-party company by the city already showed that Post Falls has much, too much high density. The study showed ten percent vacancy when five percent is ideal. And that didn't include the current stuff that's being built. Also, if it would be considered to have the units set back to R1 have a limit of two stories. Having four-story buildings doesn't align with a community wanting a small-town feel that is noted in the comprehensive plan. We already have seen the ISOs coming with building R3 next to R1. Also, the school board of Post Falls has recently said they would like to be notified of these larger communities. The superintendent has historically been notified, but at least in the past, the board denies being notified. With the school board already asking for land to be set aside for another school in the future along Prairie between Greens Ferry and Idaho Street, when they found out North Place went from R1 to RM and almost doubled the density population, a bond is in our future. What is going to happen if a bond cannot be passed? How will it impact the children in this community? I would ask that you please consider this. Hopefully, in the future, we can get R3 off the CCS zoning because as much as I love roundabouts, and I really do, the CCS zoning to get R3 roundabout is used much too often. Thank you.
Thank you. Wishing to speak in opposition, I'm going to butcher this name, so I'm just going to say Peter. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Oh, you're good. I know, it's Mary Pique, Petri, Peter Judo. I live in Foxtail, actually live pretty close to Hope. So I know Hope is eventually going to be connected. Right now, you can't get through. I know Rob said it's kind of like a dirt road, but it's like a ten-pound mound of dirt, so you can't actually drive through. But still, nonetheless, I, and I've even, I did message personally Rob at some point that I think the speed limit maybe needs to be brought down on Hope because you do have the elementary school there, you do have a playground there, and even though it's thirty, people go like forty, forty-five. And, you know, they screech through that roundabout. So I mean, opening it up and putting these apartment complexes is probably only going to make the situation worse. And then a lot to unpack here, it kind of seems like we're being held hostage by these developers. We're being told like, approve these apartments or we're going to put a commercial there. We're going to put automotive, we're going to put hotels, we're going to make your lives miserable. miserable. So approve these apartments, or else you see what happens when we're unhappy. Is that really like the kind of town we want to be known for? That we have to give in to the developers every time they come up and ask for something? And if we say no, that, okay, well then, you say no, we're going to put a hotel, we're going to put automotive, we're going to put a dealership there. I mean, I think we should have more say in how we want our community developed than just being held hostage by these developers. That's all I have to say, bud. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Let the applicant back up for rebuttal.
Got somebody back here.
Yeah. Did you want to, no, if you want to speak, come up.
I actually wrote in comments and asked that they be read. I wrote in to the last time they got denied for their priorship of this.
Did you, I, yeah, so why don't you just come up here and just, you go ahead and have your four minutes, and then, were they actually in the staff report, or?
Yeah, so I received an email back from somebody on the committee that said they received them and they'd be put in there. So I don't know if that ever got put in, and then I wrote in again this time as well.
Yeah, there's a, there's a whole bunch of, all the, anything that was sent in is in here, but you're more than welcome to speak now.
Okay.
And then just, you know, name, have four minutes, and then go ahead and fill out one of the forms and turn them in over there.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
All right, so my name is Jeffrey Williams. I live in the Foxtail community as well. So I just wrote in, I'm just going to read what I wrote in to you guys. This is my formal request to have my comments heard regarding the public hearing and notice that we're actually doing now. So I do actually object to the request for a special use permit or rezoning request and ask that it be denied. Like I said, I've written in before. Let me scroll down through my thing here, because this is not necessary. Yeah, so there is other land out there that's billable. If you actually take an overview, which they're conveniently leaving out of their overhead pictures, if you do an overhead view, you'll see it looks like a multifamily corridor going down Zorros there. And the only exits out of there is actually Pole Line. So if you, otherwise, you would have to go through a whole big community and go all the way around. So the only real way out of there is down Pole Line, so Zorros to Pole Line. And right now, there's already lines of cars going down that where their current apartments are. So there's not enough parking in these apartments they're building, which if you listen to what he said, you would see that they're only building so many parking spots for so many housing units, so that, you know, everybody's lining the streets out there parking. And I actually recently called in because there was a van that was just beat up and windows broke out and everything left in a field where they're talking about building too, which is, is an increase since those apartments have been built. So we're seeing more crime over there already. Let's see. And another thing is that my wife and I actually sold our last home because of the same issue. So they actually built, right in our west Sunset view of the back of our house, they built a big old multifamily four-story complex, and it blocked our view and it dropped our property values way down. So that's the same thing that some of these people are facing with their backend on Zorros right there. So he, when he showed a picture, he conveniently kind of left out the backend of the homes right there. They're going to be now facing garages, all right? And so it's going to block their view and their airspace and their west Sunset view, so. Let's see. And I understand it has already been zoned for community commercial services, which typically allows a mix of retail office, service-based businesses, which some of them built out there right now are one-story or two-story. So it's not like they said like they're going to be a forty-five-foot-high thing, you know? So we're already seeing some. They can be, I'm sure, but who's going to build a forty-five-foot-high garage over there, you know? And these zones are designed to create vibrant business districts that are integrated into the community and provide essential services. What we do not need is more multifamily spaces there. What we do need is more shopping centers and access to shopping and things like that, which right now, we have to travel to Cordelet Lane or to Spokane Valley for. Excuse me, my dry mouth there. Regarding whether the proposed use permit will be compatible with the health, safety, and welfare of the public or with the uses in the vicinity of the proposal, I believe it would degrade the area, which is already being misused with too many gas stations. If you look, there's already four gas stations within a quarter mile there. And too many multifamily units are already there. Like I said, it's a corridor. So we should be improving these areas rather than degrading them. And I don't know if this is going to comply with the goals of the master plan, because I don't know what your master plan is, but like I said, I think it's going to increase crime in the area. It's going to definitely increase traffic, because right now, if we try to go out, we really all have the one exit, the Zorros Road, and we all go down to Pole Line, because that's the only way to get to the forty-one and go north or south. So right now, the traffic is already very high on Zorros, so even if they open it up at Hope, which is north of us, who wants to leave their house and go up to Hope and then take that way around when it's more convenient, quicker to go down to the Pole Line to get to the forty-one? And there's also already a gas station and a stoplight right there at the forty-one. So if you were to try to put a future stoplight at the end of Zorros and Pole Line, you're going to have so much backed-up congestion there in a place that already takes you five minutes to get onto Pole Line. So, so I'm against this proposal. I actually recommend that it be changed back to R1 instead of multifamily. So that's, that's all I have to say on this.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And then, just so you know, Mr. Williams, your letter is in here. Is it in the packet? So it was there, yeah.
And it'll be put on the record?
Yeah, it's in the record. It's in the packet.
Todd Whipple again. You know, the CCS zone was what, that R3 that you guys talked about, that was brought early on, I think before we were actually in control of the property and it got denied. Then we took some time off. They heard, hey, don't do anything till Highway forty-one is done. Then we came back at CCS. I think we heard that twice. I think we had that conversation. Finally brought it back after Highway forty-one was done and had to be based on the fact that we had to wait for a definite date when the interchange was going to be done. So we've been waiting the entire Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three of Highway forty-one, and now the interchange. Traffic is a, is a big deal, but traffic is a big deal. When you talk about numbers, and I went through that earlier, when you, when you talk about numbers, ADT, don't get caught up in ADT, because that's a twenty-four-hour time period. And the rule of thumb for ADT is, is that ADT represents, or PMP hour, I'm sorry, represents ten percent of ADT. So if you say I've got four thousand cars on a road, or ten thousand cars on a road, or a hundred thousand cars on a road, the ADT, or the PMP hour is really only ten percent of that. So if you have four thousand cars on a road, then you would expect in, in an hour, the peak hour, you would have four hundred cars over sixty minutes. And they would come in waves. You'd have platoons, you'd have a platoon of ten or twelve, and then three or four, and then ten or twelve. You'd have the hares and the tortoises, guy driving fast, guy driving slow. And so traffic is based on PMP hour trips. It's not really based on ADT. ADT is used, Rob lives in the world of ADT, because he, he has to size roadways for future uses, for future development, and for future land uses to make sure that if this block of land is going to generate forty thousand cars a day, that he can get those cars on the roads, there's enough lanes, to get him to and from where they're going. The rule of thumb has always been ten thousand cars a lane. That's kind of, is kind of the, is the standard. And that, that falls back to, if you were to get down way into the weeds and go into trip generation, has to do with what the, the perfect volume per lane of roadway is at an intersection. It's a little more than a thousand cars in an hour, which then starts to generate the ten thousand, blah, blah, blah. So traffic, well, traffic is a concern out there. I'm not saying traffic isn't a concern. We're not on the road, and for us to get on the road, we have to do traffic studies, and for us to even move farther than that, we have to mitigate. So I'm not concerned from the perspective, and I don't think, I heard from Rob that he wasn't really concerned. He has some questions, he has some validation that he needs, because you have a thirty-year study. Now that these are coming forward, what's going to happen? Commercial generates, on average, probably twice as much traffic, ADT and PMP hour than does multifamily. Multifamily generates less trips per unit than does single-family. And primarily, that's found in the strip generation manual, as it relates to commercial. So my background, not only doing multifamily, but single-family, also commercial. And so in my tenure, is what I've done over my career, I've cited forty-two Walmarts, ten or fifteen Home Depots. We did the Eagles before they became Lowe's, and we did Lowe's. I've done Walgreens, I've done all kinds of commercial development. The problem with the commercial development on these properties is, is that they're not going to be A properties. And the great way to know what retail thinks of this corridor is look at which way does the front door on Grocery Outlet face? Faces Highway forty-one. Doesn't face towards Zorros. It faces towards where the highest traffic generation is. Zorros doesn't have enough traffic on it to generate A or B retail uses. You're going to wind up with C retail uses. You're going to wind up with uses that guys are going to go in there, they're going to build something, they're really not going to care about the nature of the community. They're not going to care about what they'd bring, and they're not going to maintain it. You know, I think one of the things that's, there's two things. All these projects, if you looked at the site plans, not only the, when we come back again, they're all overparked. Mr. Douglas, when he does a project, he requires every unit to have a garage, so that every unit starts out with a garage, and then we park at least one more unit, one more open space, and then if we have extra, we go extra. It's very rarely that he ever falls below two units, two parking spaces per unit, which is a garage and an open space. If you look at these two, you'll notice that the Hope property is at the two, but then the early dawn is parked at like two, three. And the reason is, is because they're, since they're concomitant, they're basically next to each other. People over on this property will, more, more non-garages parking spaces on the early dawn piece that will allow additional parking. So A, people have the right to park on the street. You can't tell someone to park. Alls you can do is a apartment owner is provide, required to have a garage, and then also give them also an, an open space on the surface. But I think the, I'm not so sure we're in here. They are. I just kind of want to go back to, or up to. I think the best picture we had was at the end. This is, I'll go back to this one real quick. This is Grocery Outlet. This is the back of their store. This front, this backs onto the current apartment project that he has, and it's, it's oriented this direction to prove that the front door faces Highway forty-one. Pole Line doesn't have enough, enough traffic to bring traffic off of Pole Line, because there's not enough volume. So Grocery Outlet went here, and they focused their front door towards people driving on Highway forty-one. But I think as it relates to people being against commercial, I mean, multifamily in favor of commercial, I think this is probably the best example that I can get, can give you, is that these buildings, the apartment buildings are, if you figure a garage is twenty-two and a twenty-six-foot drive aisle and an eighteen-foot driveway, you're sixty, you're already twenty off of early dawn in this instance, and another fifteen or twenty feet beyond that, these buildings are already almost a hundred and sixty feet off of the street. They would be almost two or three hundred feet away from the houses on Zorros. And so when you look at a perspective, it's, they're really not that tall. I'm not going to say that people aren't concerned about the height, they're not concerned about multifamily. But I know that if it was me, I would rather have what's on the right, because Mr. Douglas builds, we always called it a moat. Hey, so we've got a Douglas project, we got to do the Douglas moat, and the moat is his garages. So if you look at his properties, he provides safety and security because of the garages. He landscapes because his job is to keep and lure tenants. He wants his properties to look the best, he wants them to come in. And it's not just on the outside, but if you were to drive through his properties, if you were to look at his amenities, if you were to walk through them, you'd find that they're across the board, a hundred percent maintained, better than some of our other clients would ever even dream to. So as it relates to the properties where we are on early dawn, our early dawn property will make this commercial piece look like it still is yet to be developed. And so I hear the concerns, I just, it's important, I think, for the planning commission to understand that these apartments will provide a quality environment along Zorros, Pole Line, and early dawn, in commensurate with what the single-family already did. The first, I can't keep the subdivision straight, and I apologize, but the first subdivision off of Pole Line, they actually pushed their, their houses quite a ways off of, off of Zorros. The next, or I call it the Architerra subdivision, they're the one where they've got the vinyl fence, they've got a bike path, six feet of landscaping, and a street tree. You're not going to get that. In fact, the single-family is going to be uglier than the apartment project when it's built. So unless you heard something from the public that you want to ask me a specific question on, I'll go sit down and be quiet.
I had a question real quick on the parking, actually, for you. You just mentioned that the Hope one is two spots per unit, but then in the, and maybe I'm reading this wrong, so we got ninety-six residential units, it says seventy-three parking, ninety-six garages.
Then, then I was wrong. It's a little bit short, which is, I know that the early dawn one was.
Yeah, the early dawn's way.
Is way over. And that was why. I thought, I actually thought we had made one, I thought we had made one and one, so I apologize. I was going to look it up before I said it, but.
Clarification.
I didn't.
Cool.
So.
All righty. Thank you. What do you got?
I'm in. We've already closed public.
Up to me.
Is this a late submission in opposition?
Yeah.
Is it unique?
No.
All right. My recommendation is probably to close the public hearing and enter into deliberation. We've spent quite a bit of time going through all of this criteria. That would be my recommendation at this point. Commissioners?
Sounds good to me.
I do have a prefacing comment, though, in response to some of the public comment out there, and I'd like to caution.
Should I close it out first?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right. Close out the hearing?
I'd like to caution the commissioners in some of the comments tonight, not, that we've received, and the Joint HUD Statement on Discrimination in Fair Housing Act specifically addresses if a local entity considers the fears or prejudices of community members when enacting or applying its zoning or land use laws respecting housing, it could be in violation of the fair housing. There was some testimony today about crime and apartments and those people, and I'm going to instruct you to disregard those comments as unsupported and not a basis upon which you get to make a decision, or we could be found in violation of the Fair Housing Act. I'm not going to say more on that issue, but be advised not to make, consider those comments in, in arriving through your deliberations. Thank you.
Cool, understood.
All right, should we look at the review criteria? Are we going to handle these one at a time, or?
I think it's, I think it's cleaner. The presentation is the same. I mean, let's be real, for all, for at least the first two, and then the third likely as well. Why don't we go through the criteria for the first one, two, twenty-four dash seven, working from north to south, starting with the Hope and Zorros one? And if the application is going to be the same for each of them, then we can probably short shrift going through each of the criteria, unless the commissioners feel there's a distinction in any one of the proposals versus any of the, any of the other two. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
I mean, we can go through them all, it's just a little bit laborious.
No, I think that's fine.
But I think they're.
Because me personally, I'll, I'll have some that'll vary and, and some that are the same, so.
So let's start with twenty-four dash seven, if, if that's okay.
Twenty-five, seven.
Twenty-five, seven?
That's twenty-four, seven.
Twenty-four, seven.
Yep.
Twenty-four, seven.
Is that the top one?
Twenty-five.
Yep, that'd be the one on the very far north.
That's one. Got it. Twenty-four, seven.
All right, this is the Hope and Zorros proposal for ninety-six units. I think I'll just, that's the distinction on this one, the skinnier piece up to the north. Review criteria, number one for this special use permit proposal, whether implementation of the special use would or would not conform to the purposes of the applicable zoning district, here being CCS.
Yeah, with the special use permit, you can have basically multifamily apartments in the CCS, based on the walking placement table.
So we have some of the purposes of the applicable zoning district being CCS. I know that there's some discussion and testimony tonight about. I know that there's some discussion and testimony tonight about supporting higher residential uses along the arterials in the CCS. I think there are some bullet points that were discussed in testimony discussing that issue. And it's just whether or not allowing this special use would conform to the purposes of that zoning district.
And we're talking zoning here, we're not talking the comprehensive plan?
Correct. The, the zoning district being the CCS. And we can consider things like, you know, in the CCS, we have the definition of CCS zones supports uses which include retail or performance of consumer services and permits a variety of retail, including other professional uses. But it also includes residential uses may be allowed at the densities permitted by the high-density multifamily, the R3, by special use when they will not compromise the present uses. So that's kind of the intent of the CCS. And the question I need you folks to grapple with is whether or not the implementation of that use here would, would, would conform to that district.
Was this turned down for R3 before? Or was it the bottom one?
I think, well, actually, I think the bottom one.
Bottom one?
I don't know, I think that was before my time, to be honest. Commissioners?
Yeah, they Obviously, it allows for it, that's why we have this, I, I forget the comment the young lady made, but the roundabout routine we have with R3 to CCS to special use permit and
And I think that addresses criteria in number two a little more.
I don't know, I don't know what the, the solution is to that. I don't really like that this is how these applications have to be handled. I don't think that the applicants probably like that this is how they have to be handled. But I don't know, I think it's something we should look at, that the, as a city, the way we administer the process, this is the route that applicants end up having to take.
Sure. And, and the laws require the city to, to implement some multifamily residential zoning. Can't, can't exclude it, it's got to go somewhere. And right now, this is, CCS is an option.
I think from a zoning perspective, I mean, you're looking at CCS. You, as far as roads, you have miners' collectors in there, you got a minor arterial in there. So, and all those support, you know, are conformed to that applicable zone.
Yep, it conforms.
I'm not hearing much in opposition to that one, so I will take that as a nod and move to number two. Whether the proposed use, and again, this is kind of the one where it's obviously allowed by special use as established by the chapter for the zoning district involved and complies with all other laws, ordinances, and regulations of the state. So this is the one where it's a special use by permit. And the commission is, is entitled to weigh in on that and can decide whether or not condition, additional conditions can be imposed on this as a condition of development. We've talked about some of those as mitigating factors. But this one is basically, if it wasn't allowed as a special use, it wouldn't be before you tonight.
Yep.
Personally, I think that one's more straightforward than, are there first criteria?
Yes, sir.
Because it, it's specifically spelled out in our zoning code, in our city ordinance that you can have resident, you can have multifamily residential uses in the CCS zone if it goes through this process. And that's why we're doing this process.
And it might be important to note out that I'm not, I don't, I'm not aware of any evidence that said the project is otherwise not complying with other laws or state, state regulations or anything else.
Correct.
So there was no testimony to the contrary on that issue. Number three. Whether the proposed use will or will not be compatible with the health, safety, and welfare of the public or with land uses in the vicinity of the proposal.
I say it doesn't. Going from seventy-six to ninety-six apartments on a five-acre parcel, and then when you add in the next ten acres, the traffic problem without a real study, that we've had some testimony on the traffic already. So I would say no on that.
Yeah, I think this is the one where I have probably the most problem with, as far as transportation, we don't know what that transportation study is going to say, what long-term effects it could, could have. Obviously, if it does identify something, they'll have to work on that beforehand. The other issue with this is the public safety. We have a letter for both of these, from the police department, saying they have concerns. The mitigating factors that they're offering, I, I think the developer can definitely do, but I also think those are probably very common to apartments. So I don't know if it's really going to help. It's really a number of apartments versus how many police officers we have at this point, so.
Well, I, I don't like the, I don't like the traffic that we have in Post Falls. However, I don't believe that developers or apartments cause traffic. People wanting to live here cause traffic. And people, you know, this is a So the question is, where do we put the traffic? And this is an area that I think can handle traffic. And this Highway forty-one corridor has been delayed trying to build traffic infrastructure. And I think this has been a patient project waiting for the infrastructure in place, and I think, I think it's there. And where else are you going to, where would be a better fit? Traffic-wise in the town to have, you know, the housing that we need?
One of the things that comes up for me too, with this particular project, is Foxtail's almost like an island right now. There's very few access points in and out. You've got Fenwickus and you have Zoros. Now you've got two streets that are going out to Hutter, so out into the county. And that's unincorporated going that direction, so we don't have control over that. I think this particular development creates a lot more connectivity to Highway forty-one. And I think we're going to need that desperately as the north side of this Foxtail project, not these apartments, but the single family that's going towards Prairie, as that starts to come in. If we don't have that connectivity to forty-one, pole line's going to be hell. I mean, it's already tough as it is, but if we don't have Hope and Early Dawn and these other streets that are coming out to forty-one, and the city's not paying for that, it's the developer that's paying for that. Just a thought.
Yeah. It does add the connectivity for the neighboring developments. And I also agree with what the proponents, statement the proponent made. I think these are very nice-looking developments. I, I prefer the look of, look of these particular multifamily developments over a lot of multifamily, single-family neighborhoods. So I don't think it's bad-looking, I think it's a nice-looking product that's well-done. And, you know, we got a massive shortage of attainable housing. And, you know, we can, if we as a city try to regulate it, we're going to miss. We can't regulate it. The, you know, the private industry and vacancy rates will dictate what gets built, the rate that this gets built. And if we, if we try to regulate it, I think we're just going to swing and miss. And all we'll do is create less affordable housing and more problems. So I prefer to leave it with the property owner to do what they think's best with their property. And I think this is as good a spot as we have.
I also think that the CCS zone, in fact, that's one of the things that it states, and it also states that our comprehensive plan, when we're talking about forty-one north, which is this kind of sub-area, we're talking about creating buffers between highway and commercial and single-family. Isn't that exactly what this is doing? We're going from commercial on the highway to a multifamily with pretty significant setbacks from public streets. You know, a heck of a lot more architectural variation than you would get with a, a large commercial development. And then into single-family. So to me, that's kind of the way you buffer projects like this. I understand the concerns about having somebody in your backyard, I get that. But that particular property has been allocated to the CCS Not necessarily to the CCS zone, but it's been allocated to the business commercial use in the comprehensive plan for twenty years. So this isn't new. What's going to actually be built on it's new, but the plan for that land really hasn't changed that much. My thought.
Commissioner Carey, do you care to weigh in on that issue?
Um, I, well, the traffic, I, I feel the same way, the traffic is going to be mitigated as best can, as it can, and the roads are going to be, as it goes along, the roads are going to be improved and traffic is going to move a lot smaller. That's not the issue, any of it, I don't have any issue with that part of this.
And since I have a split on this issue, are there anything that could be done to mitigate some of those adverse incompatible issues that several of the commissioners had, had suggested? Commissioner Wilhelm, you suggested it's not compatible. Is there anything the developer could do or we could condition, and this is our obligation? If we deny these things, we have to suggest how they could mitigate these conditions.
I mean, although we're just talking about this parcel right here,
Yes, sir.
We're talking about two parcels.
Agreed.
And we're just doing this formality, so it's all clean. But putting nearly three hundred apartments on fifteen acres with Zoros and Hope, I mean, we're all, the citizens of Post Falls are drowning in traffic.
So it's a density issue for you?
Yes.
Sure.
And the traffic, as we've had some testimony, we did have some testimony talking about that commercial buildings look worse or whatever. Well, I've heard numerous complaints about apartments, I've never heard a complaint about a commercial building. So if, how the traffic goes with those, I don't, I don't know. But with three, nearly three hundred apartments on fifteen acres, this, on the second part of it, it was nearly, it was multifamily, R3, it was turned down. Now we're back at CCS with thirty-seven more on this other one, although I know we're not dealing with that right now. So it's like a second bite of the apple. So all that traffic in that little area, it's just, I see it as too much.
Okay, thank you for the discussion on that point, commissioners. Let's move on to number four. Whether the proposed use will or will not comply with the goals and policies founded within the comprehensive plan. I think there were several cited in the staff reports and discussed here. I'm open for discussion on this point as well.
Well, the first one in the staff report is goal one, talking about higher residential density closer to Highway forty-one, and this one is just off Highway forty-one. So easy to get to, walk out, as long as the traffic's not too bad.
Well, I think part of it too, we've tried to go along with having buffer zones, residential, multifamily, and then commercial to, to buffer all.
There was some indication of policy nineteen as clustering development. I think it might fall under that one, if that's who you're referencing, commissioner. There was some discussion of goal seven, the fiscal impacts of the, and the cost of the housing is going to increase. Goal seven, I think, was cited by both the applicant and the staff as possibly being supportive of the approval.
Yeah, if you go by the, the specific goals, so goal one, grow and sustain a balanced and resilient economy, I think this is contributing to that. Because a, a variety of housing is the way you get that. There was conversation about, you know, we have a lack of grocery stores, we have a lack of other types of shopping amenities. The reason why we have those, that lack, is we don't have rooftops. We don't have density, therefore we don't have grocery stores. And that's why some of these grocery stores anchored projects that have been on the books for a long time haven't moved forward. So if something like this, if something like this doesn't happen, those don't move forward either. It's kind of a catch-22. So that's why I think we do, this is fulfilling goal number one. Goal number seven was another one that was referenced.
Just to elaborate on what you're saying, the, I, I don't, I don't really think it's a catch-22, it's, it's definitely the rooftops lead.
Yeah.
And that's why there aren't, you know, we've got some, you know, Cabela's and, you know, the development next to Cabela's, that hasn't, the commercial didn't cause the rooftops, you know, but the, when the, when the rooftops come, the stores move in around. And so I think that, you know, the vacant lots there haven't attracted commercial because they're not great commercial lots. And the other lots in the area that would be good commercial lots, I'm sure will attract more businesses as a result of, of more people living in that node.
I agree. We had goal number seven, which is plan and establish types and qualities, quantities of land uses. I think this is following in on that, and that we're trying to provide variations in land uses, trying to accommodate housing needs. See, what else do we have on there?
I don't, I, I think one thing that we underestimate is we, you know, we've got, whatever, two-thirds, single-family residential in the area. That's, that's changing though nationwide. You know, youth are less interested in single-family residential, more interested in living in multifamily with, don't want to have a yard to take care of. And this is, this is the product, you know, and price. This is the product that youth in general are more interested in.
And it's not specifically a goal or policy, but it is in the forty-one north, what do we call it, in our comprehensive plan? It's our focus area. And that specifically addresses the questions of the baggage roads, which is Zoros. That's what Zoros is planned to be. That's supposed to be a alternative to Highway forty-one. And this project is adding to that eventual development, to that eventual design. I mean, it, it may not feel like its capacity is there at the moment. But part of this project requires a traffic study. And if that traffic study says something has to be done at, at Pole Line in Zoros or has to be done differently at Hope in Zoros or Hope in forty-one, that's all part of what could come out of this project.
And then one other one that I think is important, Chris, is policy one, support land use patterns that promote compatible well-designed development. And, you know, what's more compatible to that area than this buffering multifamily adjacent to other multifamily in a, in a row? That is, I mean, you don't see much that's more well-thought-out and designed than the product that's adjacent there that they've previously done, so. Policy one is pretty much, I think, a home run.
There, there was one other one that I noted, commissioners, policy eight, talked about compatible, I'm sorry, redevelopment of vacant and underutilized properties within the city limits. I don't know if that triggered anything, any response from you guys or anything else, but it may, I mean, these are open, underutilized lots, appears to be in their current state. So that might play into the consideration as well.
It is something that we've, we've talked about, especially as we're going into the comp plan review, is that focus on infill. Because oftentimes people have the impression, I know I've had the impression, well, there's tons of vacant land. And there is, but a lot of that land doesn't have the utilities, doesn't have the service, isn't zoned, isn't in-city limits even. And so it's not like we can just go put this project two miles north on Highway forty-one out on the Prairie. It doesn't work. It has to be an, an infill site, it has to be within the city limits, it has to be, you know, water, sewer, power, all has to be there. And that's, that's why I was asking some of those questions about, especially in regards to sewer, because I know sewer has been a concern in this area in the past. But at least along Highway forty-one, that's been taken care of, so.
Okay. Thank you, commissioners. I'll let you deliberate.
Who wants to go first? Well, the way the, the projections are for Post Falls, in 10 years, it'll be 70,000 here. 20 years, it'll be 100,000. If we don't start slowing down some of this apartments, we're already drowning in traffic. I mean, I've been here all my life. If you'd have told me 60 years ago there was going to be traffic jams in North Idaho, I'd say you're drunk. So this is what we have to look forward to. Approve this, approve the next one, approve the next one, and try to get to work because we've just turned into Seattle.
But if you don't...
It's like you said, though, we are, we are going to grow. We don't, there's nothing we can do, we can't stop it. We're going to keep growing. I've been here 37 years and seen a tremendous amount of growth. All we can do is try to maintain it and regulate it the best we can and make it fit the best we can.
Well, even with this one, this is a special use permit, the, the total between the two, they added 37 more on top of it. Not just straight-up special use permit, there's 37 more, and they threw a pickle court in and, and a barbecue and a dog run. So what? That's 37 more apartments.
But if, if that's what our code allows...
Yeah, that's the thing, we...
You know, that's, that's the counterargument to that is, what would you have them do otherwise?
Well, I mean, it's, I just, if they were doing the straight-up SUP, but it went from, the other one was denied R3.
Yeah, but we gave them off as a condition.
That's multifamily, so they come back with this, and then they add more. It's like a second bite of the apple, but they're going to take the whole apple by adding 37 more.
But my point is that if our code says, this is what you can do.
How do we tell them you can't?
Should they say, okay, well, we know we can do that, but we're not going to do it?
Well, I'm talking about traffic. They talked about a traffic study. Where's the traffic study?
Is that a condition that we make sure is on there?
Well, let me, let me ask some...
It is, it is conditioned.
Just throwing it out there. Okay, let me ask some questions, as far as conditions go. Obviously, there's already six conditions on this one.
Seven, I think.
Yeah, there's seven, or no?
Seven now?
Yeah, there's six on that other one.
Six or seven, okay. Either way. Like what I called out earlier, the Hope development, it's less than two per, could we require as a condition to make it at least, if approved, make it at least two? We could add that, right?
I'm sorry, I'd make two, what?
Two parking spaces per unit.
Two parking spaces per lot, because the Hope one is less than two.
Yes.
Right now.
Hope one is 1.8.
Yeah.
So the limitations on your conditions, by state law, you can require more restrictive standards than those generally required in the zoning ordinance. So yes, you can impose that there's at least two units or two parking spaces.
Per unit.
Per apartment on each, on every separate development. I think that's not something that, that's really objectionable. You can also have minimizing adverse impacts on other developments as a condition of the approval. What that might be, and that's what I was alluding to before, like if we are going to deny this, or several of the commissioners are anti-this project, what would, would there be a condition we could impose or suggest that would get them to approval because we'd have to inform them of that? If it's just a simply no, and I don't know what would fix it, then that's not very...
No, we have a reason, yeah, I totally get that. Timing of the construction, so, I mean, Mr. Whipple said 2027, if they're working from, and obviously, we haven't even done the third one here, but they're working from south to north, they're talking 27, 28, 29. Could we put some sort of wording in there that, you know, if approved, this one has to be, you know, done before the concrete can be poured on this one, or, or does that get into a gray area, or?
You're talking about phasing?
Yeah, pretty much, like, you know, let's just say they get approved and the one at Pole Line is approved.
Because they are separate developments, commissioners, I'd rather not have one contingent on the completion of the other because they are separate and there may be separate financing, financial considerations or anything else. If there are going to be conditions, I would have them within the box of the boundaries of the property, but the applicant may not be adverse to doing such a thing. I, I don't recommend that being a condition as to completing all of X before Y before Z.
And it does sound like based on what his resources needed, like, we'll just say concrete, for example, you gotta, can't be in two places at once.
Sure.
I gotta get done with one before I go to the next one, so.
I think it'll take care of itself in that way.
Yeah, and it could, yeah.
And also with vacancies, it'll take care of itself. I don't think we have to be in the middle of it.
If we did try to do something where you tied one to the other, you could end up in a situation where this developer is finishing up this, the first one, and something happens, and they sell off the other two, those other two can't be developed because they never finished the first one.
As I said, since they are separate proposals, since we're in this weird, quiet, crazy area...
It was just a question.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'd also like to add some sort of condition around the police mitigation that was talked about in the letter, if approved, that they do the 110% of the mitigation of those four bullet points that they could do for the apartment.
My recommendation on a, on a condition on that one, since I have spoken with our police liaison and they weren't necessarily certain as to what they would want to see in a development like this, I encourage them to look at the adjacent development, say, well, do you like what's next door? Are there any issues with that one next door for signage? I think signage and everything else, most of these issues will take care of themselves, but my suggestion for language on a condition would be that the applicant is required to meet with the police liaison and attempt to work out any concerns with, that they're raising in their letter. Since it is not concrete and we aren't really talking about standards that have been enumerated.
Okay, fair enough.
That would be my recommendation.
I like that.
And then finally, obviously, both of these have bonus density, but they're also including the bluegrass, which is already developed. There's a lot of shareable amenities. If I was bringing a motion forward, I'd probably remove the bonus density on the larger lot and put that back down to, it's still 175, but you're not going to have the, the amount of density on there. They're going to benefit from the density bonus from the Hope one, that's just to the north, and then obviously, bluegrass is still there that has the pool and other amenities. So is that, so would that be a condition we could put in, or how, how does that work?
I think you can cap the bonus densities. I mean, they are offering it and it is an ask, and the, the commission may approve site two capped at 175 units. Notwithstanding the bonus density request.
I just don't know what we achieve by doing that. I mean, if we, let's just, for a second, say that legally, we could decide that we didn't want any more people to move to Post Falls, you know, which we can't.
Done.
But if we could, if we could do that, how would you do it? You know, or if we were going to limit development, how do you, wouldn't we want everything? Wouldn't we want the development in one place? Wouldn't we want more units in this one area than everywhere? You know, is, is capping the number of units that will be, will be consumed in this area, does that help the overall goal? I mean, this is an area that's got the infrastructure to handle it, can handle the traffic. If this is a good spot to have multifamily, why not put the units here and then let the market sort it out? There won't be any more units built if these don't rent up.
I'm not saying not build the units. I mean, still, it's 175 versus 192. So it's still in the same area, just a little bit less density, a little bit less traffic, a little bit less cars on the road. I'm just trying to mitigate some of the concerns that we've heard tonight. Because I think ultimately, and this is where I've seen it with the city council meetings, and maybe it's not specifically this land, but lots up and down 41, at least a couple handful ones have been denied over the past couple of years because 41 wasn't done. Well, then even now that 41 was done, there was one denied, and I don't know if it was specifically this one or another one. So it's like, when are we gonna, the development wants to come, and then we just keep denying it for the same reason. Okay, 41's done, yes, the interchange is going on. So I think, you know, people are still coming here for many, many reasons, and we got to have a place, you know, you could go into a whole conversation about affordable housing. People live in apartments, hopefully, they can then save up and buy a house. There's other projects going around for that, so. I just think this is going to get developed sooner or later, and these are, these are good products.
It's a good product and it's a good spot. So if, if we need units to satisfy the market, then why not put them in a spot that's set up for it?
Yeah.
That's my point.
Yeah, no, and I, and I get that. I'm just saying, let's limit the density just a little bit. So if it was me making a motion, the one would be the Hope development, increase the parking to 192, how that works between garages and spots, but that gives per, two per unit. The police, meet with the police liaison during the building to see what can be done in that part to mitigate any issues there. And then also, I would cap the early dawn at 175.
Chris, is there a reason we couldn't do a motion that, for both of these?
No, it's just, I'll sort it out on the back end.
Yeah. Okay, I'll make a motion.
Yeah, the only, the only other comment I'd have on that, Commissioner, is maybe in the motion, if you're going to propose something for the parking, maybe rather than giving them a set number, just say they have to have two to, a two to one.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
So if they reduce the number of units rather than increase the park, parking...
That's odd, because it will reduce the number of units.
That achieves your same result.
Yeah.
Rather than putting a specific number of the parking stalls in that first proposal. Sorry. I just think it might give a little more flexibility.
No, it's a good point, because it will reduce the number of units, so.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion here. I'll move to approve SUP 24-7 and SUP 25-2. Finding that they meet the approval criteria in the Post Falls Code 182070 is outlined in our deliberations. Subject to conditions, one through seven listed. I agree with the additional condition of meeting with the, with the liaison for the police department to address their concerns and these concepts in this CPTED flyer. And I also agree with the two-to-one parking to limit the on-street parking and impact on the adjacent neighborhoods.
So that should provide a minimum of two-to-one parking on-site.
Yep.
For the, for the Hope development, the other, because the other one's already over.
Yep. Along with the seven outlined in the staff report, and direct staff to prepare a written reasoned decision.
Okay, may I have a motion on the floor?
I have a second.
And a second. We'll call.
Wilhelm?
No.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Schlathauer?
Yes.
Stephenson?
No. I heard him thinking.
Oh, okay.
No. All righty.
Motion passes.
Yep. All right. I propose we take a five-minute recess.
My kidneys think.
And a but compatible uses, so they are a budding multifamily to the west. Here's the agencies that were notified and the comments received are as you see here. Pretty much the same as the last one except for Felix, Felix sixty-six does cite, there's some utilities with the project. And Post Falls did cite the service call concerns on this one as well. The pole line, the, the line they're talking about is along the southern boundary of the project. And this would be included as part of site plan approval. We would get the appropriate separation distances apart, as part of that as well. So here's those. The criteria just went over, any questions for me on this project?
That, actually, that Phillip sixty-six line?
Yep.
I've, I've dealt with those in other areas and. My experience has been your setbacks are massive.
Yeah, they, they dealt with that on the phase one of their project over here because you see that line runs just along there. So Bluegrass had to deal with that a little bit on their phase one. Maybe they can comment on how they dealt with that and how they plan to incorporate that on, on this phase.
Okay. And. Have we talked transportation yet?
I did loosely go over it, but you know, we are at this point, I can bring, Rob can come up here and discuss transportation.
Perfect.
See how quick I bail, boom, I'm out.
It's almost, it's fun to watch you two. That's a planning question, I'll get John back up here.
Okay, so. We've been, we've talked a lot about Zorros obviously tonight. And it, it, my impression is that, yeah, I know, I understand we have to get a traffic plan, a traffic study done. But I have concerns about like the way the site plan, I know it's conceptual, but the way the site plan is laid out. Doesn't accommodate a roundabout.
So. They don't show it, but that doesn't mean it hasn't been accommodated for. When the property was annexed into the city of Post Falls recently. Calculations were done and we worked with the applicants engineer, which is Whipple Engineering. And we put a planning level roundabout design in there. And there was the requirement within the annexation agreement for them to provide the additional rights of way necessary to accommodate what we. From a planning level anticipated the need was going to be for the roundabout. So that would be taken into account with any site plan review.
So it, it, it wouldn't be a situation where after the fact. We end up with something where we have to chop up this roundabout or whatever ends up going there. Because there's something already developed on that portion.
That would be correct during the site plan review process. And with going through the trans, uh, the traffic study, we'd be looking at what is going to, how is that going to fit? And what are the, a little bit more refined, what is the impact going to be? You know, with, with the roundabout, at least we have with the annexation agreement, as I already mentioned. That they are obligated to provide additional rights of way. The bigger issue is going to be if we have to do a roundabout there in the near term, having to get the rights of way on the south side of the roadway to fit and work.
Okay. It. And this particular project only has one entrance. The other entrances are through the adjacent property. Are, is the city requiring these two properties to be legally tied together? So that those, and, and forming easements back and forth and everything.
With the shared access, we would require that there be a reciprocal access easement across the two properties, yes. Anything else?
Any other questions for Rob? So you've pretty well already thought this all out then, huh, Rob?
He usually does. John, you mentioned the police department sent a letter in for this one also?
Well, it was inferred, it was kind of confusing, so we included it on this. First two. On the other one, in their sentence structure or in their language, they reference pole line. So we didn't want to, so we thought the most conservative approach on this was to apply their comment to both of these. I think it was like the latter part of the first sentence.
So this is surrounded. Except for Foxtail, whatever it's called, by commercial.
To the west of Bluegrass, we do have on the intersection, I think that's where seven eleven is and the.
Grocery outlet.
And the grocery outlet's at this, so everything from this, this spot is commercial, then it transitions to that. Multifamily here, to a proposed multifamily in the yellow area.
And multifamily to the north.
Yep.
So contiguous wise, it's touching only multifamily.
So south of it's commercial too?
No, south of it.
It's residential county.
Yep, county properties, south of Pole Line Avenue.
Oh, I don't know, I'm looking at them.
Okay.
All right.
Bring it up.
Are you done, anything else?
No, I have nothing, that's it.
And can I ask you just a question, uh, one of the written public comments. Asked about or pointed out that. In the adjacent project. They didn't, the developer didn't add in the dog park. Was that something that was changed?
Add in a way?
They didn't put in the dog park.
I don't know. That was a separate site plan, it may not have been conditioned to add a dog park. I'd have to go look at the site plan approval.
This one had like, uh, required two amenities and they have five or so listed, so it could be a situation like that also.
Yeah, if it wasn't specifically called on a special use permit, in the site plan, they proposed, um, more than the minimum and then they didn't provide one of them.
Okay.
We wouldn't hold them up over, they still meet code.
Got it, okay.
So we would just say, what's your code request? Versus tonight was being proposed. By, as a part of a special use permit, we would say, okay, you, you proposed a project of this, this is what the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed. So then we would go look for something very similar in nature.
Okay. So it might be something. Like, the, the conditions stated for this one. Don't mention anything in regards to. What they had to do to get their, or what, i- if we approve the density bonus, there's nothing in there in the conditions that says they actually have to put in. The things that say they're going to do.
Graphically, they did. The record did, but you could provide more meat on it and say, I would think, and you can correct me, that they need to construct the open space as proposed.
Yeah, or, or provide the amenities that they said they're going to provide.
Yep, exactly.
If we don't do that, what is the enforcement that the city has to make sure that those things are actually there?
Well, my approach is I go to the special use permit, I would go look at the seven amenities and I would tell them, I'd be like, you proposed, they made this decision based off seven amenities. And then I would go look is, because maybe they got a varying demographic and so they have a good, good argument for. Horseshoe pits is better than, or something else better than this.
Yeah.
And be like, okay, that's a decent substitute, and so I would just use basically my professionalism on that, saying you have seven and seven, they're more similar than dissimilar.
Yeah.
Right, that's how I would handle it, but if it was conditioned, said, no, you gotta do the seven. Then I would go to look and say, I don't have the wiggle room now because you guys as a body. Enforced it through a decision that you would have to go take it back for you to amend that.
Okay, just a question. All right. Invite the applicant up.
Good evening, Austin Fuller, Whipple Consulting Engineers. In. Just because we've been through this before, if you don't mind, I'd like to kind of go through this a little more quickly, is that all right?
That's acceptable.
Yep.
Good. So I'd like to start off with a couple of comments that we had, based off of the last one and based off of. The, the deliberation we've heard already. So. I'm going to move along through, again, this is the, the site of the project, we are right here at the south. I show the vicinity here. This shows a better picture of where we are than the other two because. Goes down a little bit to the south a little more. So grocery outlet, I believe, I actually drew a little map here, is this site right here. And then, I'm shivering a little, seven elevens right here. This is the pole line property, kind of an overview of it. And then I'm going to go over this data table, one parcel, the site area is approximately four point seven six acres. We're in the CCS zone, the allowed density at eighteen dwelling units per acre is eighty-five units. The bonus density, which would be thirty percent for the amenities we have proposed, is twenty-five units. Which would allow us up to hundred and ten units and we're proposing ninety-six. So I think one of the questions that we were asked previously would have been the parking, so we have ninety-six units. Two hundred parking stalls provider, two hundred parking provided. Hundred four parking stalls and then ninety-six parking garages, so we do meet that two point oh parking standard. Then if you go back a little bit, you could see here, talking about the pipeline that you were talking about earlier. We do have a little extra space here and that allows for the buffer of the, the pipeline. As well as this area here, which I'll talk about in a bit, this is that sixty-five feet that was a condition of annexation. For open space calculations, again, this is amenity space, this is not necessarily all of the open space, as you can see, there is open space around here, there's some open space. Over here as well. But for amenity space, our required open space is twenty-one thousand six hundred square feet and we're providing twenty-seven thousand one hundred and sixty-four square feet. Discuss that, this is our landscape plan. As you can see, again, much the same as the other two proposals you've heard earlier today. We have shrubs and then we have street trees as well as landscaping in the center. And we do have the proposed amenities that I, that were discussed in the other property projects. We're in the CCS zone, business commercial, this is the city limit right here to the south. And then I've gone over the criteria before, I'm not going to go over them again just for sake of time. So then. Uh, I'm going to keep going through these. I'm going to bring up the photos again, these are the amenities in the Bluegrass Farms apartments. And then, so the comment letter that stated that there was no dog park, that is incorrect, there is a dog park on the Bluegrass Farm apartments and it's in the big port yard and that's past the pool. This is the seven eleven, this is a commercial use that would have been outright permitted in this area. As well as the, this site, which was another commercial use and then, again, I brought this up before, but really the. Multifamily, there's an incentive to have upkeep on the landscaping. And with commercial, there's less of an incentive because there aren't going to be people living there, they're not going to be looking out every day and seeing the landscaping nearby. I'm going to go over this photo again, just to show you, this is the single family landscaping that's proposed, or that's existing. This is our landscaping on the Bluegrass Farms apartments. And then this would be what would be proposed, however, this would be on Pole Line Avenue. Then I want to go back and double check, okay, this one is a little different. So the conditions from the annexation for the pole line property include grand of right of way along Zorros and Pole Line, up to eighty feet of right of way. Fifteen foot utility sidewalk and drainage easement along Pole Line. Ten foot easement along Zorros for utility sidewalk and drainage and then a triangular right of way with sixty-five foot legs along the intersection of Pole Line and Zorros. And that's in the anticipation of any kind of future traffic mitigation that would be required. And as Todd said in his rebuttal, this was the single family with a vinyl fence right against it and then the landscaping that exists, so our landscaping will look better than this.
Is that, is that Zorros?
Yes, this is Zorros. More landscaping of our proposed facilities. Again, our responses to public comments that we received in the record. The density concern, this is allowed in the zoning code. There were concerns about views and aesthetics, so this is allowed in the special use permit. Other allowed uses without a special use permit could impact residents more, it could be just a flat facade or it could be a tall building. There were concerns about construction dust, that is again, an issue about with code enforcement. And then there were comments about the rural community of the site, so this is within the CCS zone, it's allowed. And then apartments take up less space per resident than traditional single family residences, which minimizes the spread of urban sprawl into the prairie. We went over this before, these are allowed in the CCS encouraged and then they're also just, they would not require a special use permit for them. And that includes again, retail grocery store, which do have semis that go in and out and unload and load. Automotive dealerships and repair, hospitals, casino, bingo halls, gambling establishments, bar, taverns, lounges. Warehouse retail, this is not saying that we want to build that or this is not a threat saying we would build that, this is why we're saying. We think this would be a better spot for apartments because we think this would have less impact than what could be allowed. And as you can see, this is what is allowed in the zone and permitted without a special use permit, under commercial. And then on the right are our Bluegrass Farm apartments with the landscaping that we have. These are more photos of the commercial use that's, that would be outright permitted in the zone. And that we don't think would be appropriate for this area. Or this specific site. And this is the apartments, as you can see, this is kind of one or two residences back, but the. The garages take up a pretty significant portion of what's visible. And furthermore, the apartments are broken up, they're not just a flat top. And I believe we went over the police comments, I'm here for any questions you may have, but I'm going to end here, we asked the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve this special use permit, thank you.
Let me ask a question about the construction dust and I only ask this because there is a letter in here and I know it's not a condition of it, but when you guys are building. You know, like say it was, you know, right now, middle of summer, it is dry outside, obviously that doesn't, you know, December is not going to be, it's going to be totally different issue. But what type of mitigation do you guys do to try to keep that dust and construction debris down?
That's a good question. Water trucks, we use water trucks to, and hoses, to minimize any kind of dust impacts. Again, that's a, sort of a code enforcement issue, if that's something that somebody has a concern with, they can bring it up to code enforcement.
But is that something where you guys are building and you're like, okay, there's dust in the air, like we follow X, Y, and Z and now it's met those and they're like, hey, bring the water trucks out now? And you're not waiting for code enforcement to come saying, hey, we got some complaints?
Right, there, there is, uh, my understanding is there is local and state code in place that kind of regulates that sort of thing?
Yeah, and our building department oftentimes goes out and we have gone out and warned individuals about the dust. I think the key part of this though is about you guys too to consider is, how do we prevent it from occurring? So you guys can contemplate that and discuss, because I, you know, there may be a path to encourage the.
I think if they had to receive the phone calls from the majority of the neighbors. They will.
Yeah.
It's tough out there on the party, man, when that wind gets going.
No dust.
Oh yeah. There.
Yeah. Any other, anybody else have any questions? Nope, all right, thank you.
May I make one more comment, please? I neglected to make this earlier, so my understanding of city policy regarding the traffic study is that. City policy is not to require a traffic study before a special use permit is granted, is that correct?
I don't know the provisions on the timing of the traffic study in with the special use permit.
Okay, we weren't requested to have one, if we were requested to have one, we would have done one. We have no issues with that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, let me, well. I mean, because that is one of the conditions.
But they weren't required to do it as part of this application.
Right.
Yeah. Typically, before we would approve the site plan, I would think we would get the traffic impact studies, that way we don't approve. I'm just.
Yeah, because it's part of the site plan review process.
Yeah, that's what I'm, okay.
They, they wouldn't go out and spend.
No, I understand, yeah, no, you wouldn't spend the money not knowing that if it get approved or not, yeah, no, I got that.
Okay.
Cool. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Public testimony? All right. Okay. Uh, wishing to speak in opposition, Julie Hensley.
Julie Hensley, thirteen sixty East Warm Springs Avenue, I would like to thank Wilhelm and Stephenson for advocating not having higher density. You have listened to the residents and a third party that has stated we have too much high density. That us as citizens paid money for and they spoke and actually the one thing that came out of their study is, you guys have too much high density. Although landowners do have property rights, you do have the ability to place caps and not have bonus density and add more parking to decrease the impact of residents. Twenty-six percent more homes, twelve percent more homes, one percent more homes adds up. The police are concerned and having them speak up should be screaming, maybe we need to look at this. Post Fall streets will be impacted by these increases, schools will be impacted, the police and fire will be impacted. The health of our citizens is impacted. It currently takes over three months to see a primary care physician and six months to see a cardiologist. How much longer are we going to wait to allow the health of our citizens? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, wishing to speak in opposition is Jeff Lorenzini, I believe he's already left, if I remember correctly. I oppose the issuance of a special use permit, I will make verbal comments. I am assuming they're probably similar to what he spoke to earlier tonight. Any rebuttal? No rebuttal. All right, that will close out the hearing.
Uh, thank you commissioners. The final matter before you this evening is SUP twenty-five dash three, Pole Line and Zorros. A standalone project, yet in conjunction with the other two hearings we've had tonight. Looking at four point seven six acres and ninety-six units in CCS. I'd like to personally comment that. I'm not sure how a casino could be developed on that property. Because I don't think you're going to get a casino on that property, so if our zoning code allows for a casino, I'd like to see that. Because I, 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 that one baffles me, but nonetheless, all right, review criteria number one, whether implementation of the special use would or would not conform to the purposes of the applicable zoning district. So because this project is separate, I'm not going to belabor the point, if the commission has additional comments that are different from what we've already discussed, then we can voice those. Or if it's going to be the same discussion, you can tell me, we can move on and I can adapt the previous findings if you'd like to.
I think they all apply.
Yeah, for me, it's going to be pretty much what we talked about earlier. The zoning is CCS and then, you know, you can talk about your roads and transportation around there, R three is allowable within. Special use permit within the CCS, so.
Commissioner Wilhelm, is, is that all right with you if we adopt the same findings from before? Okay. Uh, let's go to number two, the same idea here, the special use is allowed as a special use permit, otherwise we wouldn't be here. Unless there's a discussion on that, I will move forward on, on criteria number two.
Yeah, based on the land use table, it is allowable.
Allowed.
Yep. Uh, number three, this one is where the more of the meat is, whether the proposed use will or will not be compatible with the health, safety and welfare of the public or with land uses in the vicinity of the proposal. So I presume from the discussions that we've had earlier that the same. Concerns are being raised, Commissioner Wilhelm, as to the density issue and the traffic.
Well, this one's a, a.
And I don't want to speak for you, go ahead.
Yeah, this is a little different for me.
Please adapt.
I don't see as much problem with the traffic as I did that other three hundred units. So I'm not going to use that same argument that I had for that, I do believe that. I would like to see it go back from ninety-six to eighty-six, give people this a little bit more elbow room. But yeah, I'm not going on my old argument with this one.
Sure, I would note the difference on this one, again, they're, they're not allowed to go south to Pole Line, I think that that's one of the conditions of the approval, so.
For access?
For access, so the traffic is, they have one access onto Zorros would be a new access and then otherwise, I know the development is internally routed into the existing adjacent subdivision. So they're only going to have the one access shared to south of the pole line. So that's going to track, direct traffic a little differently, I just noticed that.
I, I did want to bring up. It, it's not this project specific. But Pole Line, I think is going to be. Just a huge hurdle for the city going forward because so much of it is county. And not in the city and not under the city's control. And. When you exit forty-one on Pole Line and you go from, I think it's like five lanes right now initially. And it goes down to two and then it goes back out to three and then it goes to two with no shoulders when you hit the county. We're going to face some serious accidents on Pole Line. It's already, if there was, somebody was mentioning that person that was going around doing the racetrack. That's happening on a very regular basis now, where they race down Pole Line. Again, outside city limits, but then they make the turn into either up Hutter or they, or not up Hutter, up Meyer. Up Fennecus or up Zorros and they're doing these laps. And it's one, two o'clock in the morning and we've had the sheriff out there, we've had Post Falls Police out there a number of times. Again, not specific to this project, but I think it's something we really have to be aware of with anything that's going in or, in, on or around Pole Line there.
Yeah, and with the development of this property, you will get those Pole Line improvements and the Zorros improvements as well.
And that was one of the things I was leading to is that we are actually getting improvement on Pole Line for this small portion of it. And it's something that the developer's paying for, not the city.
Yeah.
And an eighty, and an eighty foot right of way, I mean, that's substantial.
I took the long way to get there, but yes.
Like, my comment from earlier around the safety and the letter from the police, I think that for me, that stands again and.
Yes.
You know, if, if approved, I would like to add a condition to talk with the police through the liaison and see how that could be a mitigating factor.
Thank you commissioners. I'm sorry, Commissioner Carey, did you?
Oh no, I was just saying on the police too, yeah.
Uh, and finally, number four, whether the use will or will not comply with the goals and policies found within the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it does, the, you know, high density residential, closer to high forty-one, which is goal one. Different land uses, as much as we do have over thirty percent of R three, we need a good mixture of it. And we could talk, like I said earlier, we could talk about affordable housing, whole day long. It's just some people can't afford a house right now, you know, they have to start with the apartments, so they have to have, and whether we like it or not, people are still moving here for various reasons.
And a lot of people are already here, they're already here and they're living generationally with their, you know, with grandmothers and parents and. And the kids all living together and, you know, if we don't have attainable housing, that continues, you know? That's not adding any traffic, it's just giving people a place to live. I think that Policy nineteen, the clustering is important. I think that Policy 19, the clustering, is important to I didn't really outline the policy when I talked about it earlier, but Policy 19 is the concept of keeping the keeping these compatible uses in one area. And I think this is a great area with the, with the infrastructure and the, and the the traffic availability there. And then also, something that I'd point out that I think often goes under mentioned, Goal 15, maintain and improve the city's water and sewer infrastructure. And the staff, or that's Goal 15. Then Staff 1 is support land uses that maintain enhanced community level of service. Those kinda go hand in hand. And, you know, these fees, these fees we're talking about here, this isn't a lot of property we're talking about here. This is, you know, a couple of fives and a 10. Not a lot of property, but the fees on this, John, I don't know if you have an idea what the current fees are, but I'm gonna say it's probably in the, so on these 400 units, it's probably in the $20,000 to $25,000 a unit range. You know, it's probably $10 million. It's going into the city to pay for water infrastructure, sewer infrastructure, streets, impact fees. You know, yeah, people have an impact, but I think the fees are, I personally believe the fees are heavy and I think they outweigh the impact of the people. And so this is a, this mitigates the impact of the people, I believe.
Well, and there was testimony, Commissioner, as to the need for the extension of some of these lines up to the residential development in the future. And this will enhance the water stream and, and water infrastructure by doing that. So I, I think that's a good point to consider.
Payment of the fees plus all these dedications, all these right-of-way dedications, that's, this isn't cheap land.
Okay, uh, thank you.
All right.
I think my last thoughts on this would be, you know, if we could I think there's a lot of amenities there. I don't know, I'd like to see it, less units. I did do the math on the parking, so I, that was good there. I like the traffic study that's gonna be done. I would add a condition to be liaison to the police. If the construction dust becomes an issue, hopefully that is mitigated. And then, since all three of these hearings we had tonight were all together, I kinda hope that they work themselves out where one is being worked on and the next one's being, and there's not too much overlap between those, just to lessen the impact on those residents in that area. That's just my thoughts. Anybody else have any other thoughts or would somebody like to make a motion?
Going from 96 to 86.
Any other thoughts? I'd like to make a motion, one way or the other.
I will make it. I move to approve, I'm sorry, I didn't have it open here. Pole Line and Zoros special use permit, file number SUP-25-3. Finding that it meets the approval criteria in the Post-Falls Municipal Code 18-dot-20-dot-070 as outlined on our deliberations, subjecting conditions 1 through 6 contained in the staff report and adding condition 7, that they meet with a police liaison regarding safety and this CPTED principles. And direct staff to prepare a written reasoned decision.
I'll second that.
Okay, may I have a motion and a second? Roll call, please.
Wilhelm?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Schlotauer?
Yes.
Stephenson?
Yes.
I add them five on the agenda tonight. Administrative and staff reports.
None.
Commissioner comments? None. All right. All in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, adjourned.